Yeah. Please remain standing for the presentation of colors. I want to first recognize all of our students who were a part of our opening today. First of all, the student performers from Western High School D Squad, under the direction of Ms. Crystal Williams. We had Madison Brown, LaChe Guy, Kaitlin Fletcher, Tiana Jernigan, Amaya Lucas, Stephanie Carby Hall, Sophia Milton, Skylar Ross, and Kenya Chavez. And then we also had the junior ROTC from Frederick Douglass High School, Cadet Ava Kenton, Cadet Eric Kenton, Cadet Anissa Vini, Cadet Brianna Ford, and Cadet Jamai Robinson. Let's have another round of applause for those students. Now, I'd like to call for a motion to open this meeting. Commissioner Richardson, is there a second? Commissioner Reed, all those in favor? Chinya. Okay, we have six, am I counting right? Seven, and two absent, three absent, okay. I'm gonna call on Commissioner Von Dima if she would lead us for our moment of silence.
Okay, thank you very much. I would like to take the time to recognize the passing of four of our city school students. It is with deep regrets, we inform you of the passing of Barbara Pedway, who served in city schools for 20 years. Ms. Pedway served as a teacher, special education at Third Good Marshall, Jacobin Middle, Hazelwood Elementary Middle, Patterson High, and her last assignment at Paul Lawrence Dunbar High. Ms. Pedway unfortunately departed on October 12th, 2019, and will be missed greatly by her family, friends, and city schools. Milton Carrington was an energetic, expressive, and friendly student who could light up a room with his smile. Milton was outspoken and very entertaining. His presence will be missed at Reach Partnership School. Travis Chance was a vibrant 16-year-old student at Patterson High School. He loved playing basketball, hanging outside with his friends. He will be remembered for his infectious laughter and playfulness. He was fun to be around, and was super compassionate and cared a great deal for the well-being and feelings of others. Travis was very much into fashion, and was often admired by his peers for his wardrobe and fancy shoe collection. He had an unbreakable bond with his mother. As her only child, she was truly his best and most trusted confidant. Travis will be solely missed by his Patterson friends and family. Antonio Skipwith, also known as Tony, to those who loved him most, was the walking epitome of a cool guy. Tony was best known for his brilliant smile and calm demeanor. No matter when you saw Tony, no matter when you saw Tony, he was always sporting that radiant smile that could light even the darkest corners. Tony loved football, family, and his mother the most. Though Tony was the baby of the family, he fiercely guarded his mom with his whole heart. He was never shy to tell anyone that his mother was his backbone. He concluded every phone call with, "I love you more, Mom, I love you more." She was his everything. His goal was to eventually graduate college and have a career that afforded him the opportunity to take care of his mom. Outside of his family, Tony was deeply loved by a number of friends and teachers. He was such an amazing young man that had so much to offer this great city, will miss him and his angelic smile at Patterson High School. Angelic smile, sorry about that. Yusef Adam was a special student at Patterson High School. He entered the school with limited proficiency in English, but with hard work and dedication, became able to read, write, and speak English. In addition to Yusef, Yusef showed a curiosity and excitement about learning. One teacher noted that he showed up to class excited every day. Further, Yusef showed tremendous leadership in his work with the after-school program, Refugee Youth Project. Yusef was an active member in Refugee Youth Project, regularly attending and working with the volunteers to gain a further command of the English language, and also helping other students with their English development. The loss of Yusef is a loss to the Patterson High School community and to all who work with him. Can we please have a moment of silence?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner, and I think in addition to those students, we really need to also keep Patterson High School in our thoughts and prayers in the loss of three students that we announced this week. It is terrible for us to have to do this, but it is a reminder to us of the importance, I think, of the work that we do to try to help our young people. At this time, I would like a motion to approve the prior open session minutes. Commissioner Reed, second. Commissioner Berkeley, all those in favor? Chinya. Seven, three absent, thank you. Now, I need a motion to approve the closed session summaries. Commissioner Reed, second, by Commissioner Richardson, all those in favor? Chinya. This time it is six, one and two absent, and one, three absent, sorry, one absent. One cannot vote. I'm gonna get this by the time I get to the second semester, I promise you. I'm a bluebird, is that the group?
Whatever the height.
Whatever, I wish. Okay. This evening, I would like to join in with another tribute as we were remembering members of our school community who have passed since our last meeting. Also a reminder that the Honorable Elijah Cummings, who was a 23-year veteran of the U.S. House of Representatives, died early morning hours of Thursday, October 17. Congressman Cummings' illustrious career in politics extended well beyond his time in the U.S. Congress. He spent his lifetime as an advocate for Baltimore. And so this evening, I'd like to share some of his words as inspiration, encouragement, and motivation for our work as stakeholders in Baltimore City Schools, as we attempt to continue his legacy of service to our community. Commissioner, Congressman Cummings spoke a lot about children, and one of the quotes that I really cherish is the one where he said, and I quote, "Our children are the living messages we send to a future we will never see. Will we rob them of their destiny? Will we rob them of their dreams? No, we will not do that." And then he spoke of education, when he said, "Our children need to be properly educated. They need to be trained so that they can get jobs and be functional. By providing students in our nation with such an education, we help save our children from the clutches of poverty, crime, drug, and hopelessness. And we help safeguard our nation's prosperity for generations yet unborn." The congressman also had a challenge to students. He said, "Whatever it is that you believe is stopping you from being all you can be, you need to change that right now. You must have confidence in your competence. Most people who are hating on you, they are not worried about where you are, they're worried about where you're going." And then finally, a challenge to us, I think, as adults. And recently, actually, the congressman said, "I'm begging the American people to pay attention to what's going on, because if you want to have a democracy intact for your children, and your children's children, and generations yet unborn, we've got to guard this moment. This is our watch." And so I'm gonna close with a poem that he often said at different events, and in fact, I think he used this his first meeting when he was appointed to the Congress, and it's that poem called "Just a Minute." "I have, I only have a minute, 60 seconds in it, forced upon me, I did not choose it, but I know that I must use it. Give a count if I abuse it, suffer if I lose it. Only a tiny little minute, but eternity is in it." So on behalf of the Board of School Commissioners and our system, we say thank you, Congress and Cummings, and rest in eternal peace. Thank you. And now, on a happier note, I am so pleased this evening to be able to recognize, and hopefully they're here, two employees who have served our system with 30-plus years of experience. If you are here and I read about you, please stand, and we have certificates for you and would love to acknowledge you. First is Arnita Keev, who began working in Baltimore City Public Schools on October 24th, 1988. She most recently served as a secretary for the Stadium Middle School. Ms. Keev faithfully served the children of Baltimore's public schools for 30.70 years. Is she here with us today? Is she? Oh, my goodness, okay. Well, thank you for the applause, and she's probably enjoying her retirement on this rainy evening. Yeah, good day for that one, but we will make sure she gets her certificate. And then Cynthia Bruce, who began working with Baltimore City Public Schools on August 26th, 1989. She most recently served as a special education teacher for Gardenville Elementary School. Ms. Bruce faithfully served the children of Baltimore City Public Schools for 31.84 years. Okay, at this time, I ask for a motion to approve the personnel and quasi judicial matters. Commissioner Richardson, is there a second? Commissioner Berkeley, all those in favor? Chinya. Six, three absent, okay. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to you, Dr. Santelisa.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Chinya. It's good to be here with everyone this evening. I'm gonna ask, I don't see him, so we may need to hold, is Chief Grant Skinner here? New, okay, so we will hold on this evening's PEP agenda until he gets here, so we'll wait on that. And I will begin the remainder of my remarks. First, an important part of our focus on student wholeness is encouraging our young people to become active participants in their local communities, our local government, as they engage in civic life. And one of the ways that we do that is through student voice, but one of the best ways, really, to achieve that goal is through preparing young people to exercise their right and responsibility to vote. I am therefore pleased and very grateful to the League of Women Voters of Baltimore City for their efforts in registering 190 of our high school students to vote as part of the National Voter Registration Day on September 24th. Representatives from the League visited seven of our high schools, including Baltimore Leadership School for Young Women, Poly, Western, Carver, Baltimore School for the Arts, City College and Patterson High School, registering, again, a total of 190 students. I want to give a special shout-out to Baltimore Leadership School for Young Women, where 80 students were registered. Prior to the 2018 midterm elections, former President Obama said, "Don't complain, vote." I am proud of the young people who stepped forward to exercise the most important right and duty of citizenship, for which many, many people throughout the years have frankly given their lives. And I am thankful to the League of Women Voters for providing the service. I encourage all students and families to register and vote, and young people, if you are not yet of age to vote, we are charging you with bugging all of the adults in your life who are eligible to vote, to vote." Alrighty, so with regard to the community, Kerwin Community Forum, I just want to remind everyone that this Thursday, October 24th, the Coalition for the Blueprint for Maryland Future, which is spearheaded by the Maryland State Education Association, MSEA, and Strong Schools Maryland, will be hosting a Kerwin Community Forum at Dorothy I. Height Elementary School from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Now, this is one of the only, I think, the only Kerwin meeting that the Coalition is holding in Baltimore City. They've been holding forums across Baltimore City, and I think it is incredibly important for us to make sure that we have record turnout within Baltimore City's forums, so I want to encourage all families, young people, teachers, school leaders, central office staff, to come out so that people know that here in Baltimore City, we are paying attention, we do support additional resources for our schools, because we really are at a critical point in the work of the Kerwin Commission, and this is really a once-in-a-generation opportunity to fight for the educational funding equity that really has been so long denied to our city, our students, and our families, and I really do urge everyone to attend. I will just let you know, I had a previous engagement out of town with the Council of Great City Schools, but I made sure that we were represented. I pre-recorded a message, so you won't get to see me live, some of you are really okay with that. But know that I will be there in spirit with you, and I just, I want you to know, one of my proudest moments was two years ago, when the Kerwin Commission first started this work, and there was standing room only in Polytechnic's auditorium, and we ended up that year, you didn't hear a lot about it, but for the record, we had the largest Kerwin gathering up until that time here in Baltimore City, so I just want us to continue to break records and continue to make sure our voices are heard. And then finally, I want to congratulate two of our talented student entrepreneurs from Francis Scott Key Elementary Middle School, and they are, and help me if I'm saying your name incorrectly, is it John Connie Massey? Did I say it right? Oh, maybe John Connie's not here. Okay. Well, John Connie Massey and Tyvon Clark, as well as their Nifty coach, Ms. Danine McDonald? Is Ms. McDonald here? No? Oh, we should've had you all come back. For their accomplishment in going all the way to the Nationals of the Network for Teaching Entrepreneurship Competition, and this is Nationals, for any of you that know, Nifty is a very competitive organization, and I think it speaks volumes of the entrepreneurial spirit that is Baltimore City and is clearly our young people. And despite the fact that John Connie and Tyvon were by far the youngest competitors at Nationals, with the majority of 30 businesses represented by high school juniors and seniors, I just want to emphasize that again, we had elementary, middle school students who made it to national division alongside high school juniors and seniors, that's from Baltimore City, by the way. They went all the way to the quarterfinals and generated a lot of interest in their Aqua app, so they developed their own app called the Aqua app. We will be inviting both, okay, this is why they're not here, we will be inviting both of our student entrepreneurs and their coach to explain the Aqua app and be recognized at an upcoming board meeting in the near future, but we are thrilled. Thank you to both Tyvon, John Connie, and their Nifty coach, Ms. Danine McDonald, for representing the brilliance of Baltimore City and shining forth, and now I'm hoping that the Aqua app is something that I can download, because God knows it's time to clear off some of the ones that are on there that I don't use, so I'm looking forward to that. Congratulations, and I will now invite Chief Jeremy Grant Skimmer for tonight's PEP agenda. Chief?
Good evening, Dr. Santelises and Commissioners, we have two appointments this evening. First, and they are both here, so they can stand and be recognized, first Katia Stokes, coordinator of student wholeness, is appointed Director of Student Wholeness effective October 23rd.
With her own cheering section, I might add.
And second, Sashi Budulla, interim Chief Information Technology Officer, is appointed Chief Information Technology Officer.
So I want to congratulate both of them, both Ms. Stokes and particularly Sashi, who really has done a fabulous job. It is always a pleasure for me to be able, when we are able to promote candidates for top positions from within current district positions of leadership. Sashi Budulla has been part of City Schools' information technology team for almost 19 years, since October 25th, 2000, that's right, and you know what, he's such a gentleman, he doesn't remind me that he's been here longer than I have. Since October 25th, 2000, when he joined the district as a manager of IT Support Systems. In January 2013, he was promoted to Director of IT Support Systems, and for the past 16 months, he has served with distinction as Interim Chief Technology Officer. Data is critical to our ability to serve our students, and it is no exaggeration to say that everyone in the district, and frankly, in the city, from the district office and school staff, to classroom teachers, school leaders, our students and their families, rely on the ability of the IT office to maintain, support, and protect the integrity of our systems. Throughout his tenure as interim Chief Technology Officer, Sashi and his staff have maintained a vigilant focus on protecting our systems and our employees from cyber threats, for which we are all grateful, particularly me, so that there are times when I have called or emailed Sashi and saying, "Okay, should I open this?", and he immediately gets back and is like, "Absolutely not, Dr. S, do not open that." And so as a result, he and his team have worked tirelessly, but if you have noticed, we have remained, thankfully, a protected data system, and when you have the data of families and young people, that is a weighty responsibility that he and his team take very seriously. At the same time, from Osmania? Ah, university? See, I should actually have him come up. And a master's in, so that one's not in India, right, Sashi? Okay, so we switched around, did everybody hear that? So the bachelor's was in India, and his master's was in the Netherlands, and nonetheless, he would say Baltimore is his penultimate experience. But please join me in congratulating Sashi on his appointment as Chief Technology Officer for Baltimore City Public Schools. Congratulations. And with that, Madam Chair, I turn it back over to you. And with that, Madam Chair, I turn it back over to you.
And I just have to say, as a person who is still trying to get my water bill straightened out from the problems we had, it is so nice to know that my students' records are safe. Thank you, Seshi. We are going to have an information item, and that's on perfect timing, the proposed academic calendar for school years 2021 and 2122.
Good evening, Commissioners. James Torrance from the Office of Academics, Staff Specialist for Strategy and Compliance. Please excuse me, I still have a cold. The proposed calendars are for school year 2021 and 2122. This is our third year presenting two calendars. We started this when we had an executive order for Labor Day. Now, we are continuing that practice, just like all the other school districts, proposing two calendars, so that families and community can have feedback and also have a landscape moving forward. To give you an idea, we were giving back our rights over our calendar in March through a General Assembly Act, and as of July 1, we set our calendar. Just to remind you of our general principles for our calendar, we want to maximize instructional time, optimize professional learning time, consider what makes sense for families, consider observation of multiple faves, and also consider key testing windows. So MSD gives us our testing windows for school year 2021. There are some calendar requirements that we must meet. There is the 180-day instructional requirement and 1,080-hours instructional requirement. We're not allowed to open up on Saturdays and holidays or Sundays, but we are allowed to do three hours to count for a school day. Outside of that, we also have our 10 professional development days that we program into the calendar as well, so our students have 180 days and our staff have 190 days. Also, we have our legally required holidays that we are giving by COOMAR. We continue to put those holidays on there, especially in those for the primary election and general election that are approaching. So we have a primary election, which is April 28th of this school year, and a general election the following school year in November. Just a reminder of where we currently are, we are currently in a calendar that is a post-Labor Day start. We decided to move back to the pre-Labor Day start because of logistical and also what makes sense for families. Particularly, our families gave us feedback about affordability of summer camps, summer learning laws, and also for some of our low-income families, the hardship of paying for an entire month of childcare for just a few days into September. Considering the number of families that we serve, it was made the best sense to do what was in the best interest of not only our students, but also for their families. Other than before, we were going to switch back to our February professional development. After thinking about it and looking at past requests for school-based options, schools have been requesting to have staff return on that Monday and have stipend them for that. We decided to move that day and create an entire PD week, which is five days instead of four days, which made sense because we're giving schools the option to do it. Also, this is another thing. Typically, in February, we had a snow day that challenged us for that actual February professional development. So we wanted to make sure that we were being not only physically responsible, but responsible for what makes sense for our schools. And for the proposed calendar for academic year 2021, staff will return on August 24th. Schools will start on August 31st. We will maintain our winter break from December 23rd through January 1st. Spring break will be March 29th through April 5th, and then school will end for staff and students on June 11th. And then we have inclement weather days built into the calendar, five days to be exact. We average five days in inclement weather. Also, we have set out our actual professional development days. You'll notice that we have a five-day PD week in August, in that there is no February professional development. In terms of quarters, we have four 45-day perfect quarters. Do you note that some of our schools do not follow this actual quarter date, but this is for the majority of our schools? Those schools will do it through an alternative calendar or a school-based option, if they want to change their days. In terms of holidays, this is how we would do it. We, in red, indicate the actual legally required holidays, but also we indicate for our staff at Central Office what days our offices are closed as well, so the public is aware of it. Also, we set out our proposed parent-teacher conferences for next school year as well, so that staff can begin to plan for those actual conferences. And then we have here is our early release days, also so staff and family members can plan for those conferences as well. And for proposed school year 2021, 2022, please note, we do not have the testing windows from MSD. Staff will return on August 23rd. School will begin on August 30th. We maintain our winter break, which is December 24th through January 1st. Spring break will be April 11th through April 18th, and then school ends on June 8th. To give you an idea, that if we did do a post-Labor Day start, school would normally end within the third week of July. And if we had inclement weather, we're pushed towards the fourth week. Again, we have our 10 professional development days. Notice no February professional development, but we have a five-day week for our August PD week. Again, we indicate our holidays that are legally required, as well as the days that staff in this office will be closed. Again, our parent-teacher conference windows. Our tentative early release days. And then here's our timeline. So to give you an idea, we internally met with our internal offices, so one of the things we know is that we will have a short turnaround time on changing back to our traditional calendar. So we're operationally meeting to figure out what processes that we can put in place to support our offices as well as schools in making this transition. We also have done outreach to PCAB, CCAB, and actually generally asked questions about what is effective about our calendar, what are things that we can communicate about our calendar, and what can we improve on. We also have a session tomorrow with BTU to discuss our calendar and actually moving the February Professional Development Day, because we understand that they did have a conference on that day. So we're actually talking and having conversations about this. We're also going to post the calendar this evening to our website, as well as we have this tonight's board meeting and then the vote next month. We're trying to garner as much feedback as possible before we have a vote.
Mr. Torrance, can I just ask, are you going to report back any themes in the feedback when you come back?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure. Thank you.
Any questions? Okay, well, thank you. I would encourage folks in terms of looking at the dates, and do you have a, oh, thank you, you do have it up, if there's any feedback that people would like to offer.
And we have already received 70 emails.
Alrighty. There's the email address, so thank you. Okay.
So we're trying to see if Mary Ann can do financial right now. Or Tina can do CCE. You could do the, you could pull that out now.
Okay. We're just looking because of our timing, to be certain that we can get some things. We're going to do, make a little adjustment here. We're going to move, if we can, the financial summary. Oh, sorry. We will, okay, we will move and do the blueprint update. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Hayden. I work in the Office of the Chief of Staff, and tonight, I am very pleased to be presenting an update on the first year of our implementation of our Blueprint for Success. I'm sure you've heard this before. I'm going to go very quickly. The blueprint calls for strategic investment in three priority areas: leadership, developing staff capacity at all levels of our organization, literacy, and also student wholeness. I'd like to situate this conversation in the timeline of what we've done so far. You'll recall that in 2017, Dr. Santelisces engaged in a number of conversations with staff, students, and the community. She then commissioned a work group. That work group crystallized the themes that she had heard previously, and we announced in the fall of 2017 that our priorities would be those three, which I just went over. With the announcement of those priorities, we also identified an implementation strategy for our literacy and student wholeness work. We call those intensive learning sites. They receive additional resources. One of the more notable is a literacy coach in our literacy sites and a student wholeness specialist in our student wholeness sites. Those sites launched in the spring of 2018. We then studied our implementation of those sites and of the leadership work, which my colleague Ashley Stewart will discuss momentarily. We learned about our implementation over the last year. We've been engaging in a lot of formative evaluation, and then we expanded in the summer of 2019. There are now 40 literacy-intensive learning sites and 56 student-wholeness-intensive learning sites. We intend to iterate on that. Our plan currently is to expand our intensive learning sites in both literacy and student wholeness, as well as to continue to expand the work that Ashley and his office of the organizational talent and development office, rather, are engaging right now. Sorry, it's a little odd. So I'd like to frame a little, frame our conversation with some successes and lessons learned. I think one really amazing achievement is that we launched the intensive learning sites. We've hired nearly 100 people to support our Blueprint for Success in 18 months, and that is pretty impressive. We expanded our cohort, too. That meant that we went through an application process for those additional schools. We have a number of new opportunities for staff to get better at their jobs, and we're really proud of that. I think we've learned a lot about the importance of communication between internal stakeholders and also to the community. We'll talk a little bit about that in our formative evaluation report out. And I think we're very aware that particularly in our student-wholeness and literacy work, we need to be more intentional in the years to come about how we include our families and our students in our blueprint work. So, in the spirit of including voices from the field and providing opportunities for our staff to lead and have new experiences, we're trying something a little different tonight. We have invited participants in these various initiatives to share their experiences, and I am thrilled that we're doing that, but I also know that there may be some logistical hiccups. So I just beg your patience as we shuffle people up and down. I'd also like to talk, after everyone has a chance to go, about the formative evaluation work that we've done at the intensive learning sites. We're focusing that formative evaluation work there because those intensive learning sites are a cost driver for the blueprint for success. And then I want to make a note that in the upcoming, at another board meeting, either the next one or the following, I'm scheduling right now with Mr. Strake, we're going to come back and talk about some quantifiable goals for our intensive learning sites for the year ahead. Okay, so without further ado, we're going to start off tonight with the leadership portion of the blueprint. This has gotten short shrift by being placed last in previous presentations, so I'll invite Ashley Stewart and team to come up. I'll grab another chair, and I'll just slide back here, okay?
Good evening. My name is Ashley Stewart. I serve as the Executive Director of Talents and Organizational Development in Human Capital. It is my esteemed pleasure to join you this evening with colleagues from various programs that we are leading on behalf of our blueprint leadership work. This evening, you're going to hear from just a slice of the many programs that we have. First up, we'll talk about our REACH Fellowship, which is a multi-seminar, year-long program for district office professionals, mid-level leaders within district office. We will also hear from one of the participants in our work around people management, which is also an opportunity to build the capacity and muscle of our district office staff to be even stronger and more effective people managers and project managers. And last but not least, you'll hear from one of our school secretaries, who is in one of our programs that I'm really proud of, called Leading from the Secretary's Seat, which is a direct investment in building the capacity of our staff in the front office to ensure that they feel equipped and have what they need to be most productive in welcoming our families and importantly, keeping our schools running. So I'm going to get out of the way, happy to answer questions throughout, because I know you want to hear from them. The one thing I will say is that in trying to touch a staff of more than 9,000 people, it can be really challenging to understand the various needs of different sub-populations: teachers, principals, many levels of support staff, ranging from cafeteria workers to secretaries to chiefs and alike. What you'll see in the slide deck tonight, in the appendix portion, are the other programs that we run. We felt it important to highlight this evening, we didn't bring any principals up, because typically, we bring principals to these kinds of things. We wanted to highlight how we're supporting folks within the support staff realm and trying to help them build the competence and confidence to understand, better understand their role and contribution in helping young people lead and thrive. So without further ado, I'm going to get out of your way and introduce our first speaker presenter this evening, Jackie Hayden, and she's going to talk about the REACH Fellowship.
Good evening. My name is Jackie Hayden, Instructional Leadership Executive Director for Community Learning Network 10. I am a part of the REACH Fellowship. I love the learning community that has been built among leaders within City Schools' REACH Fellowship. Ashley, Monica, Tracy, and Nicole have built a family of sorts. We have come together around the results statement for City Schools: All City School Students Lead and Thrive. No matter what our individual results statements may be for our work, it all comes back to that results statement. The other thing that I love and cannot go without highlighting is that the people leading the Fellowship are personally invested in each of us. They recognize our individual learning needs and respond to them in real time. They say that they are always available to us, but more importantly, when I have needed them, they have proven it each time. I've learned that it is okay not to have all of the answers. I've learned that it is okay to be uncomfortable with my thoughts and feelings and to acknowledge both, even in the workplace. The REACH Fellowship has been intimidating at times because there's often no one right answer. I'm becoming more comfortable with not knowing the answer, because I have the tools and work with teams to, on my own, excuse me, work with teams and on my own to arrive at the answers and to resolve issues through an equity and inclusion lens. I've learned that I'm not as comfortable discussing race and equity as I thought I was. I'm not sure that in our current societal climate, discussing race and equity will ever be comfortable. However, the REACH Fellowship provides a brave space to be able to discuss race and equity. We are simultaneously working on developing our muscles to hold a results frame and performance measures in our work, while trying to understand how our strengths help us and how our blind spots hinder us. All of this is delicately wrapped in the critical examination of our racial identity development, which is a personal and sometimes difficult journey. Somehow, the team leading the Fellowship makes it more palatable in this cohort-family-like environment. I am making connections between the frameworks, readings, and experiences from the Fellowship to my work as a principal supervisor. My results statement is, "All leaders in CLN 10 are effective instructional leaders." We are working to bring that statement to life. We are defining what effective instructional leadership means at each level, and how our aligned contributions support the... and how our aligned contributions support the work. I am always pushing the entire Tenacious 10 family, that's what I call my CLN, to connect to the district results statement. Everything that we do must map back to our work to be effective instructional leaders so that all City School students can lead and thrive. Thinking about the work in this way pushes me and all leaders that I am working alongside to focus on the right work. I am focused on using data wisely and appropriately to inform my decision-making, observation, feedback, and coaching cycles so that teachers have consistent support for their development, academic planning that yields standards-based lessons that are implemented with fidelity in our classrooms. We are focused on those things at each level of leadership in our network. This work takes time to reach the student level, but we are going to get there. The greatest wins right now are at the teacher and school leader level. Teachers and school leaders are getting support and coaching in a more strategic manner. This reaches students because when we have teachers who are able to deliver appropriate grade-level instruction on the first teach, we don't have as much of a need for reteaching and intervention. When we understand that all students means just that, we see beyond the numbers and continue to drill down to the story behind schools, grade levels, small groups, and individual students to do the work to ensure that all City School students truly lead and thrive. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Jackie is in a REACH Fellowship cohort with 10 other leaders within North Avenue, within this building. That's also further down in the slide deck. And here you'll see on this slide, Fellowship components and deliverables for each fellow when they conclude this first of four cohorts that we'll be having on the right-hand side. You'll see Fellowship deliverables. So thank you so much, Jackie. The next part of the work that we'll hear from is a leadership professional development opportunity available to every manager in the building to strengthen his or her management skills. We looked at several surveys of staff in the building from the past couple of years. And when I came on board about a year and a half ago, it was very clear from folks that they could use and wanted skill development in people management and project management. And so we've been able to begin to deliver that through our support staff leadership development work. And we have Shayna McIver to talk about her experience.
Hello, everyone. As Ashley said, I'm Shayna McIver, Director of Family Engagement. I'm also proud to say that I've been with City Schools for about approximately 13 years. And over those years, I will say that I've received lots of training, not much around management training. But this by far has been one of the most practical training or learning experiences that I've had. The material and information and opportunities to learn amongst my peers was easily applicable to the work that I do every day. I know my content well, but in a new role with a new restructured team, new vision, it's very important that folks are very clear about what the goals are, what the expectations of all parties are. And I can say from this training that I was afforded not just information, but coaching beyond that training, technical assistance, tools that I can use. One of the tools that I'm very fond of is a tool called the delegation tool. What I like about it is, as I mentioned, we are shifting the work. We are changing the way that we do things. Some of my colleagues have done this work for maybe 10 years, under different leadership, different direction. With all that said, the onus is on me to ensure that everyone is very much aware of what success looks like, what accomplishments look like, and that everyone is putting children and families first. And I think with, like I said, the example of the delegation tool, it's like the five Ws. But just about everything that I assign or that I delegate to a team member, I'm using this tool. And it's helpful for me, but I think I've heard feedback from the team that it's helpful for them as well. We all are juggling lots of work. And so the five Ws, it's like the why, the when, the what, what does success look like, timelines are included. And so it's really, it is just a grid that I use for every communication just about because I want to make this a part of how we operate. As I've shared, I recently transitioned from manager to Director of Family Engagement. And I continuously use these tools in coaching. After the training, I reached out to Monica Logan, who led that work, and I said, "I need more. This was so good." I had an opportunity to fellowship and collaborate with other mid-level management staff that I hadn't even engaged, didn't even know I saw them in passing. And as a result of that learning opportunity together, we have actually collaborated together on various projects. And that's what it's all about, us aligning our work to support families and students. I've identified three concrete ways in which, some I've already touched on a little bit, three concrete ways in which our team or myself have directly benefited from this capacity building. As you know, Chief High Hubbard is our new chief, and we're excited about the work. We've restructured, and engagement, communications, and ECT are a part of one team. And while we all have worked together, prior to that, the work looks totally different. We are like, there's a need to create synergy and just a way of doing things differently. And Ashley's team, Ashley along with Dionne Metley and Monica Logan, have been, was that hook and sink? I think that's what you say, with us along the way in helping us to create team-building and vision-driven opportunities for our team. So that's one way. Another way is that my team, the Family Engagement team, while we've all worked together, I keep reiterating, work has to look different. We have to do things differently if we want different results. And so Monica, again, collaborated with a consultant from the people management team and came and did a team-building exercise with my team. And you're talking about like unearthing things and really getting clarity around our whys, why we do this work. And so they are helping us to move from, a lot of this is hard work, but move from our heart to our hands, right? And making sure that we are doing, we are meeting our goals and doing what we need to meet the needs of our children and families. And last, as I touched on earlier, I have been afforded personal, hands-on coaching. So I can email Monica, I can email the consultant and say, "Hey, I want you to troubleshoot and help me think through these things." My colleagues are there, of course, but it's good to have someone else to provide some leadership coaching. And so I'll close by just saying that I hope this work does expand to more district leaders, and they have the opportunity to be privy to and benefit from such a learning opportunity. This type of sport can truly allow leaders to set their teams up for success. And that's what I feel like, that's what I aim to do. And that's what I've gotten feedback, again, from teams because another strategy is check-ins and slicing the work. And so I've had opportunities to check in with our team. Is this helpful? Is this working? And that's the feedback that we're receiving because ultimately, we want to best serve our students and families.
Thank you, Shayna. And this work is led, as you can see on this slide, in partnership with the Management Center. And last but not least, we have Martice Brown, who is a secretary. He'll introduce himself in a moment. Martice has been a participant in two of our opportunities for frontline, front-office staff, for secretaries, Leading from the Secretary's Seat, which is really about helping secretaries use the tool of Myers-Briggs Type Indicator, learning about personality assessment and personality type, to manage what can sometimes be a complex place, their front office, when there can be conflict and triggers and happy times and all kinds of things. And so I'll let Martice talk about his experience.
Good evening, everyone. Again, I'm Martice Brown. I have served in Baltimore City Schools in one capacity or another for the last 11 to 12 years also. Currently, I serve as the Secretary of Edmonton Westside High School. You know, just starting off, school secretaries are the backbone of our school operations. It is essential that we also receive those developments too. For the first time in my career as a school secretary, I had the opportunity to get out of the building and participate in not only professional development, but leadership development through the programs that Mr. Stewart just mentioned. During our two-day experience, I learned what my Myers-Briggs Type Indicator was and knowing how my MBTI can be useful to help me interact with our students, families, and other staff members at the school. We also continued to learn about de-escalation techniques for when issues arrived in the office, especially for irate parents and visitors. We participated in exercises that encouraged and increased my organizational skills and the importance of working as a team. In addition to those experiences, secretaries receive some informational training regarding Infinite Campus, K-12 BI, Office 365, data cleansing and its importance, payroll, blackboard, and a direct connection to Baltimore City Public School staff who excel in those areas for assistance if need be. I believe that those kinds of learning experiences are necessary and essential for all of our school secretaries and even our support staff members. In particular, this was an amazing experience for me to have that opportunity to network with my colleagues not only as friends, but as professionals. Learning techniques and sharing experience amongst one another proved to be one of my more valuable experiences through the program. I would like to charge the board, and Mr. Stewart, and Ms. Logan, that next year, or even continuing on, that we would like to see this training continue in more than one way. Offer Leading from the Secretary's Seat and Professional Development Academy to all office support staff members. Offer more in-depth and informational trainings on Baltimore City Schools' systems and programs, more specifically, training on the new visitor policy, also known as Policy KIA. Extend wealth of knowledge to all persons in support staff positions, not just, you know, school secretaries, but even to our hall monitors, our cafeteria workers, because we truly know that under one vision, we can move forward. I know that implementation of these things come with a lot of time and a lot of cost, but it is definitely worth the investment on ensuring the proper development of our youth, teachers, and our other support staff members. Thank you.
So just before I close, I just want to say that I am extremely proud of the work that you see represented before you this evening. Two years ago, this portfolio, Support Staff Leadership Development, did not exist. And to Mr. Brown's point, we would love to really spread and touch many different pockets of staff population across the district. We're also working with a staff of one, Monica Logan, who you heard reference. She's our Director of Support Staff Leadership Development. She's been with us for about a year. And so just want to honor her for the work that she has done in this work. And to note that she's a staff and team of one and has pulled off a tremendous amount of, not just work, but provided lots of value. As you can hear, it takes time to produce the quality of professional development that meets people at their needs and helps them to connect into their work in ways that engages the hearts and also the hands. So I'm going to get out of the way and turn it back over. Thanks.
Yeah, thanks. Okay, so thank you so much, Ashley and team. I am excited to be able to profile that excellent work. That being said, I know that, you know, we have a lot on the agenda tonight. So team, let's just make sure we stick with brief remarks. And if you could hold your questions to the end. We had intended to do them by section, but given the time, I think we should probably keep them at the very close. Okay, so without further ado, I'm going to introduce Dr. Sarah Warren, who's going to give a very brief overview of the intensive learning site strategy for student wholeness before we hear from two members of the field.
Great. Good evening. It's lovely to be here with all of you, and I'm very honored to have our colleagues here with us. So as Sarah said earlier, we now have 56 intensive learning sites that are focused on student wholeness. We had 20 SEL-focused sites, or social-emotional learning sites, in year one, and 15 restorative practices sites. And one of our key learnings from the first year of implementation was we didn't want to have those two separate batches of sites anymore, that it made more sense to have integrated wholeness sites. So Cohort Two was handled in a different way. And those 21 new sites have had an experience in professional learning around restorative practices and social-emotional learning in an integrated way. So the folks that we have here tonight represent a couple of those experiences. The Cohort One, Social-Emotional Learning Sites, and represented by our Student Wholeness Specialist, Shanika Cheedham Fields. And our Cohort Two, represented by Principal Rosa Carmen, who can share a little bit with you about how that shift in focus and that introduction to both SEL and restorative practices has already begun to influence her school's work this year. So without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Principal Carmen.
So good evening. I'm Dr. Santalisis, and I'm Commissioner for it. The student-wholeness training that I received this summer reinforced my expectation for teachers to gain a thorough understanding of the significance of using restorative practices in our program. While we have been using morning circles in our homeroom classes for a while to welcome and greet students during the homeroom period prior to instruction, only a couple of our teachers were proactively using circles as an instructional tool to build community and increase student engagement during instruction. The use of proactive circles has helped set the tone and expectation for classroom participation while building trust and responsibility for engagement. For example, both our social study teacher, as well as our ELA teacher, used proactive circles to engage students in current event discussions, book discussions, cooperative learning, answering text-dependent questions, and sharing writing and journal pieces. The teachers have shared that using circles eliminate trust issues as well as provide a sense of community and that there's no place for students really to hide. By being in the form of a circle, everyone gets to see each other. Yesterday, we even used proactive circle to discuss our prep for our college visit that we had today. Secondly, the restorative practices have also given us the option to be more proactive than reactive when dealing with difficult situations, such as conflict management within classes. Teachers are gaining and using restorative tools that allow them to keep their power when dealing with difficult situations causing conflict within the classes. Rather than immediately sending students out the classroom when there is an issue, teachers try to solve discipline problems within the class by using restorative circles to hold students accountable for their actions. And this has been a consistent and intentional collaboration among staff to help change our culture and the way that we deal with conflict within our program. Classes sometime use welcoming circles to debrief for issues occurring outside the classroom to set students' mind for the learning, to prepare them, prep them for the instruction before it begins. And we can honestly say that students have requested circles when they felt as though an injustice has occurred with another student or with their teacher. For example, we had a student request a circle because they took offense to the tone that a teacher used when speaking to them. Initially, the teacher was hesitant to participate in the circle, but soon realized that the suggestion would bring harmony and respect back to her classroom. And finally, SEL training has allowed the staff and myself to teach desirable skills and competencies listed in the SEL framework. Our focus at this point, we're working on self-management. It's one of the competencies that we are trying to put focus on. And for the past six years, our school vision has been to help students learn coping and decision-making skills to improve their social, behavioral, and academic progress. And finally, we think that we have a systematic framework to help support the work that we are doing. I should also mention that our school is a little unique in that we are a suspension site, as well as working with students that are overage, undercredited, middle-school students. So this work means a lot to us.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Shanika Cheedham Fields. I'm one of the Wholeness Specialists at Collinson Square Elementary Middle. Each wholeness room and specialist is unique, but we all bring our passion for the children and the work we do. In my wholeness room, I pledge to serve scholars. In doing this, I'm their advocate. workable solutions. These solutions help improve their behavior and also address their concerns. They are taught to use core SEL competencies to align their strategy plan. The strategy plan is put in place as a form of accountability, so the student can measure if they're meeting their goals. As a student-wholeness specialist, I use the strategy plan to do check-ins also and monitor the students with their progress. If something's not working, we come back, revisit, and try again. Forming bonds with students and families is a vital piece in the work we do. This past summer, I wanted students and families to still be supported, so I made sure I made connections with thirty-seven families. I had events at the school, I did phone calls, I did home visits, I did camp visits. One in particular, I collected the data through the wholeness room data and also like our BIP plans. One student in particular, he was, come see me every day, like maybe five, six, seven times a day. I made sure over the summer, he was one that I was in contact with to make sure when the school year started that he was still felt supported. Now, he has his self-management under control, he'll come see me just for a hug or two and go on about his day. We did a chart with him where he comes three times a day. Last year, he came three times a day, and he identified his emotions and applied it and see, to see how he could help himself in the classroom. My goal was to make sure that the families and the students felt supported, not only that school year, but the upcoming school year in the future. While last year was successful, one thing I'm working on improving this year is the re-entry process and using Stanford Harmony and the child mind that the district put together for us in my sessions.
Thank you so much, team. I just wanted to note that, of course, this is only touching the surface of all the work that's happening, not only in the intensive sites, but across the board. So, there will be a teaching and learning update on November 5th, in case you want more detail.
Yes, and as Ashley Stewart mentioned earlier, there is a more detailed update in the appendix of this presentation as well. Okay, so, we're going to move to our literacy work. We're going to hear from a literacy coach and a teacher from Yorkwood Elementary. Alana Purvis is the literacy coach there. Janelle Robinson is the fifth-grade ELA teacher. And in this case, Alana is actually going to run through the features of the intensive learning sites for us.
The intensive literacy learning site experience includes opportunities to visit schools that are excelling in literacy instruction, additional resources to cover materials and interventions, and also a literacy coach like me to support professional learning and curriculum study for teachers. Regarding my work, I love being a literacy coach and seeing how I'm making a difference for the teachers and students at Yorkwood Elementary School. During planning, I helped my teachers to understand the alignment between the curriculum and our standards, and the work is definitely making an impact at our school. Example, last year, our third through fourth grade cohort went from eighteen percent of students meeting expectation on Park in seventeen eighteen to thirty-one percent of students meeting and exceeding expectations last school year. We're not there by any means, but we are on a good trajectory for more increased student outcomes with some time and persistence. Year one was really about capacity building and changing the culture of classroom visits. It definitely took us some time to establish what the literacy coach was supposed to do, what my work would look like on a day-to-day basis, and for my teachers to truly trust that I was there in a non-evaluative role to support their practice and improve their student outcomes. In addition to getting into the groove of coaching cycles, we had a new rigorous but much-needed curriculum to implement. So, last year was definitely full of a lot of change. However, I have built strong relationships with my teachers after taking time for us to define what our coaching cycles would look like, how the team could better support their practice and their students, and we're really off to a great start this school year. One thing I've noticed is that I have moved from being a teacher-centered coach, supporting teachers with curriculum implementation, to being a student-centered coach, focused on students, their growth, their goals, and skills they have not mastered yet. And one of our tools we use from the New Teacher Center is the Optimal Learning Environment Tool, and it helps to drive this focus. This tool is designed to help educators better understand their students, deeply know the content that they're teaching, and to collaborate regularly in order to maximize student success. So, we consistently and intentionally engage in coaching cycles using this tool. We collaboratively plan and prepare. The teacher teaches, I assess one-on-one with the teacher, and then we collaboratively analyze student learning and debrief. This is a critical move and development for our work as a school team, and I'm very proud of that work. I also appreciate my Friday Coach Professional Learning with Cohort One and Two coaches. We receive professional learning from our partners at the New Teacher Center, with whom I had an opportunity to facilitate a session on the Optimal Learning Environment and the work that we're doing here in Baltimore City at their symposium in February, and that was a really wonderful experience. I also appreciate our practice of planning, analyzing, and reflecting on our cycles with other coaches. We are in the field by ourselves, so every Friday, it's nice to be able to come together and really reflect on the cycles we're engaging in and get different expertise, just to be sure that we're continuously learning. Our coaching model is still in place as we enter into year two. However, we're constantly working and thinking of ways we can better support our students, teachers, and schools. So, I would like to invite my fifth-grade teacher, Ms. Janelle Robinson, to share some of her experiences.
Good evening, everyone. Janelle Robinson, eleven-year veteran with Baltimore City Schools, and particularly at Yorkwood Elementary, as a fifth-grade teacher. Just like Alana just shared, we had, we are an intensive learning site, and that can be overwhelming in itself to begin with, and to actually have a coach to come with it was also intimidating at first. However, it was a growing and a learning process for everyone involved, including myself along with the students. As Alana shared, in our collaborative planning sessions, she helped us to really focus in on those standards and stay in the standard at all times in allowing our students to grapple with the work that was in front of us. I will have to admit, as a first-year teacher with the new curriculum, it was a lot to handle, to try to absorb what the, what wisdom was putting in front of us with their timelines and then placing in front of our students in reality. It has been a growing process. I will admit that it has made me a better teacher, because now I'm working more towards being the facilitator of learning and allowing my students to take more of a role in their learning. I'm also postured myself where it's okay to receive feedback and get better at your craft, rather than thinking that you are one and done, and allow my students to also take that same risk and be open to those feedbacks and to make them a better student, a reader and a writer. I also had the opportunity last year to visit another school in New Orleans. They were in year two of their implementation. It was great to visit another site with the same student population, a little bit dynamic differences, but one of the biggest takeaways we took, what I took away from that was one teacher, she had an opportunity to meet with us after we visited their classrooms, and she said, you know, let's celebrate what our students can do and not focus on what they can't do. And so, that shed a new light with me and my students. Hey, let's celebrate what we can do, and let's just work to get better in all the other areas. And that included myself professionally. As we go into year two, we have really grown as a site at Yorkwood with the coach and with our teachers. Speaking of collaborating, now we changed our model just a little bit. I worked with a fourth-grade teacher, and it is great, I have to say, because I'm getting her students. And for them to make the connections from last year to this year, coming into fifth grade, has been eye-opening. It's wonderful for us to sit back, share those glows with all those students who are really showing their growth in speaking and listening skills, but also can communicate what's happening in the curriculum. We are right now in, fifth grade is heavy. I'm just going to be honest. We have thick books, all modules, but I have to say, they are pushing forward and starting to enjoy talking about the books that we have in front of them. So, I was apprehensive at first, but now I celebrate what we're doing with our students. And one of my biggest celebrations from last year was actually having students at the end of the year make a connection to a story we did at the beginning of the year. And that is to be celebrated, that our students can actually keep talking about the three books prior to the last book and make those connections. So, I would have to say, with being a intensive learning site, having a coach, collaborating with other teachers, and celebrating with my students, I see us going in the right direction, allowing our students to be speakers of their own learning and to celebrate the small things that we can grow into larger things.
Can you guys click off your phones? All right. Thank you so much, Ms. Purvis and Ms. Robinson, for sharing your experiences this past year. We have a lot of really fabulous staff members in our district, and so it's a treat to be hearing from them. I'm going to invite up now a very special guest star, Mr. Noah Carter and Mr. Roger Lyons, who are going to talk a little bit about Be More Me, which we see as a central initiative to the Blueprint. I'd also like to ask Christina Ross, if you could give just a thirty-second overview of the Be More Me project, that would be great.
As they're coming up, I just want to say to, to the folks in the audience, I hope that you are appreciating the presentation. We know that this is a slight variation to the scheduling in terms of the public comment. However, because we have students and some staff here, we really wanted to allow them the time for this. So, thank you for that. We will get right to public comment when we finish this, but this is, this is really exciting to hear from the field, things that are happening in our school, so thank you.
I was just going to use my teacher voice, but I'm excited to share Be More Me, a little bit about Be More Me with you, and then turn it over to my colleagues here who will do their, doing Be More Me every day. Be More Me is an initiative that lives in social studies curriculum in grades six through eleven. It's a three-week unit that offers students an opportunity to reflect on their identity and explore their values while also learning about the rich history, legacy, and realities of Baltimore. It is grounded in the standards. There's a lot of literacy and, and reading and writing in it, and students answer a compelling question in each unit that kind of builds throughout the years. And then we're going to be doing some engagement initiatives to kind of break down the walls up between the classroom and the community, including a speaker series and a student showcase that will be coming up soon. So, I'd love to turn it over to Mr. Lyons, who is going to share a little bit more about Be More Me in his sixth-grade classroom.
Good evening. My name is Roger Lyons. I'm a sixth, I teach sixth grade at Hazelwood Elementary Middle School. This is actually my first year teaching social studies. I was a math teacher for nineteen years, but it's, this experience has been amazing because what happens is, what Be More Me is relevant to the children. What happens is they're making connections to the city, their community. Also, it gives my children, children voice. They get to pick their own, their own interests. They're actually doing Who Deserves a Monument, Who Deserves a Monument here in Baltimore. And what I realize is that not only they, they find out what heroes are, they also see themselves as making differences in the city and the community already. And my students, they dig real deep into, and they also use various sources. It's a very rigorous curriculum, and the interesting thing is I see more writing in the social studies class than the ELA classes. So, that gets me excited because it's really, they, you see the excitement, and also talking about digging into research. I have, I have one particular child who's considered, is an IEP student, they're on the first-grade level in sixth grade. However, when they did this research, they got confused. The student didn't talk to me, they got confused, and what they did was they called up one of their heroes. They interviewed them, and they was able to do the report by talking to that person. So, what I realize is that this is taking us to a different level, as an as a teacher, to see the different ways that children learn. I had also children who now I see they're designers, they're engineers, because they're able to build their monument. So, you actually see the builders, the children building, and also even, and they don't even have some, that education, but they are, you could see that in them. So, it gives them options. The other thing I want to say about that is that I got many feedback about how challenging it can be. I had, because that's you survey them, you let them know what their experience is, and they talked about how challenging it was, but you saw how they had fun, they persevered, and they now know how to not just write, but they also know how to defend their claims. So, now I have children who never really seen, they also, not even with that, they're taught through this program is also how to compliment each other, how to critique each other. So, you hear the conversation in the rooms is changing, and also I'm becoming more of a facilitator instead of a teacher. And so, what I'm going to do is I'm going ahead and just introduce one of my students, Noah Carter, and I just said, this is a great program. I just, I really, I said this earlier, three weeks is not enough time. However, it did start a great thing, because I'm doing Natural History Day. Because of this program, we're doing Breaking the Barriers, so now they actually can use the same information to take it even further. So, now I'm going to introduce Noah Carter.
Good evening. My name is Noah Carter, and I'm in, and I'm in the sixth grade. I'm happy to tell you more about my monument to Antonio, monument to Antonio Michael Freeman. I picked him to have a monument because he has done so much more than just play football. He helped the homeless by giving four hundred to eight hundred needy families food. He was born in Baltimore and went to Poly Technical Institute and Virginia Tech. I'm interested in going to Poly, so I felt connected to him. I also felt connected because he grew up on North Avenue, and I live on the Alameda, not far from where he grew up. When I grew up, I wanted to be a doctor or a scientist, so I could find a cure for sickle cell. So, like Antonio, I want to give back and, and help people, just in a different way. I love this project, and I would like to work on more projects like this, because we can learn more about the culture where we live, and I owe all to Mr. Lyons for helping me with the project and helping me be a great writer. And this is my model I had made of Antonio Michael Freeman. I had made traits in Mr. Lyons' class. I also wrote his, his last name, and the jersey is for, because he played on the Green Bay Packers. I gave, I gave him two stickers for when he plays a football, and I used Play-Doh around here to make his skin.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Noah, could you, could you, could we take a closer look at your monument? Do you mind? We won't break it, we promise.
Okay. So, while they look at the monument, I'll talk a little bit about the Blueprint Intensive Learning Site Evaluation Strategy, and appreciate your note on time, Commissioner Tania. We will come back in the next board meeting or two to talk a little bit more about goals, so you could ask some more questions about this at that time. But in a nutshell, our intensive learning site evaluation strategy has really been about focusing on formative data. We hear all the time that school districts fall down on implementation, and so we want to make sure that doesn't happen here by studying how we've been implementing, particularly since this is a scaling strategy with each year us adding more, more schools. So, on the right side of this, you'll see we're progress monitoring throughout the year. We've been doing what I consider to be one of, or to be a pretty strong formative evaluation here. We have done focus groups of intensive learning site stakeholders at all levels of the organization. We've surveyed more than fifteen hundred students. We've surveyed many teachers. We have another survey process in, in place right now for the literacy-intensive learning sites. From there, we discuss that with our program team, and then we have an executive review process where cabinet officers are weighing in on this data and then making adjustments to implementation. In addition, we will do summative benchmarking with quantitative data at the end of each of these years. I would caution against expecting many quantitative results in year one of We've surveyed more than 1,500 students, we've surveyed many teachers. We have another survey process in place right now, for the literacy-intensive learning sites. From there, we discuss that with our program team, and then we have an executive review process, where cabinet officers are weighing in on this data, and then making adjustments to implementation. In addition, we will do summative benchmarking with quantitative data at the end of each of these years. I would caution against expecting many quantitative results in year one of a program like this. In fact, much of the research that our blueprint was written, you know, developed upon, was on initiatives that had between two and five years of implementation. That being said, some highlights just to go over with you. Students overwhelmingly report that the wholeness room is a safe place for them to visit, to the tune of 84% of the 1,500 students who surveyed. Every stakeholder with whom we've spoken, that includes principal supervisors, principals, and teachers, are reporting that the wholeness specialists are really critical, and are providing crucial support to their buildings. And staff is reporting that they think this focus on social-emotional learning and sort of practices is really beneficial and the right move. That being said, they want to know a whole lot more about it. And so Sarah Warren and team are working on how to get more training to schools in our intensive learning sites. And specifically, we, and I made note of, excuse me, I made note of this before, but there's a need to integrate the wholeness planning, and the SEL strategies, with how we're working and talking to our communities and our families at the schools. And so I know that's a project for Sarah, and also for Chief Hike Hubbard in the year ahead. On the literacy side, a similar thing, you know, this literacy coach is an essential support for implementing curriculum. That's what our principals are reporting out. Teachers are saying that they in fact are getting more training from the coaches, which is exactly what we would hope to have happen. Thank goodness that came back that way. That would have been, that would have been pretty bad, right? And we're hearing some really positive feedback on the continuous improvement, the school-level routines that we're putting in place on the literacy sites. One thing that is very clear in our implementation, and areas for growth that we are addressing and will continue to address, is that schools are a little unclear about the role, the various roles who are providing support. I think this is not unusual, that when you put someone else into an ecosystem of support, folks aren't sure where their boundaries are. We're working to make that a lot clearer in the year ahead. And then finally, we have some areas for growth when it comes to providing tailored professional learning for literacy, and I think also for student wholeness. So, what does a principal need to know, what does a teacher need to know, and how can we deliver that kind of content consistently? These are questions that our team continues to wrestle with in this year. Oops, sorry. And so with that, that concludes our formal update. I know, I'm happy to take questions, or to invite Sarah and Ashley back up to answer some questions, but I'm also sensitive to the time requirements, Commissioner Tania.
Thank you, this was an awesome update, and first of all, I just want to say thank you for that. Any questions, comments, observations? Commissioner Reed?
Thank you very much. I guess one observation, can you go to slide 41? Because the public didn't get to see that. But, especially in light of what Ms. Purvis and Ms. Robinson said, I think that's a pretty critical slide. If you can put it in the previous, the earlier deck, so the public can see that. It really resonated with me probably as much as any other slide.
Sure, happy to do that.
Yeah, and especially, because it looks like it's a conjunction of both the wholeness and the literacy, so, I mean.
Great, we can do that.
Thank you.
I think we've just been overwhelmed.
I just wanted to thank the staff, this was such a very well-rounded presentation. And so I appreciate the thoughtfulness that you guys have used to put this together. So we will, Sarah, have a conversation around data and quantitative data in a future meeting.
Yeah, our plan is to come back and set some targets for the intensive learning sites.
Okay.
And we can discuss the basis for those targets then.
Alright.
Thank you, and we look forward to our ongoing reports, both here and in other committees. And again, a plug for Teaching and Learning Committee, because a great deal is shared during that time. Thank you so much, and thank you everyone who came out tonight to share the work that you are doing. Okay, at this time, I'm going to just go through the, review the consent agenda. We usually do this, this is not a time where we will vote. We'll see if commissioners want to remove any items, and then we'll, prior to the public comment, and then we will return to this for voting. Okay, we'll make it, okay. So I believe I'm starting with items in 12, correct? Okay, and these are procurement items, 12.01, Daktronics Incorporated. 12.02, Leaders for Tomorrow Youth Center. 13.01, Sustainable and Non-Sustainable Cafeteria Products. Okay, there's a request to pull 12.02. 13.01, anyone? Okay. 15.01, Kalliani Environmental Solutions. Was that Kate? 15.02, KIP Baltimore Incorporated. 15.03, Commercial Cabling and Sound Incorporated in Denver. Okay. 15.04, is that I.F. Fisher? I'm sorry, that's a J, sorry. The line made it look different, okay. 15.05, Denver, Elec. 15.06, E. Pacunas Construction. 15.07, Chilmar. 15.08, W.W. Granger. 16.01, Frontline Technologies. That's it, right? Did I get them all? Alright. So the one that has been pulled was, and that's for a vote, 12 point, it was pulled for a vote, not for information, 12.02, okay? With that, I'm gonna go back now to our public comment, and we will start, let's see, with specially recognized groups. I have, I got a note that P.CAB is not here this evening, okay. Baltimore Teachers Union, Mr. Neil Ross?
Does that green light mean something? Okay. I'm turned on now. So, my, where was I? My name is Neil Ross, I work for the Baltimore Teachers Union. And I'm happy to report that I don't have a report. And so you should be really pleased with me today. I will, I do want to say something, Cynthia Bruce, I have known, remember Cynthia? I mean, it was so long ago. I've probably known her for 25 years, and she, I think, has been at that same school for the whole time. I'm not, I don't swear to it. But she was also a building representative, and a member of our executive board. So she's had a lot of service with BCPS and with the Baltimore Teachers Union. And I would also like to say that Yorkwood is one of the schools that I service. I don't know if that's, sounds kind of, you know, I visit, let's put it that way. And in that school, you have a very supportive principal. And I recently visited the school, and met a teacher whom I knew from another school. She was so happy to be there. She said, I get all the support I need here. So shout out to Ms. Redd for me. I usually tell principals I don't say anything good about them, because they might get fired, but I'm not gonna, it's a joke, but I'm not gonna say that. And I only took a minute, and, oh, two minutes, they're cheating me. Thank you.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna help you with a part of your report, and I will say that I was very happy to be with members of the BTU on Friday, at your Quest Conference at the Baltimore, at the Baltimore Convention Center. It was an excellent conference.
You should have mentioned, I should have mentioned it, but it's.
Okay, but thank you.
Yes, and we were pleased to have you.
But I also want to thank you for, because it's always one of the best experiences that I have in terms of how you are helping to extend the opportunities for professional development and growth for teachers and for members of the PRS, the PARs, and other members of the union. So thank you so much for that, and congratulations.
And it's past my bedtime.
Good night.
Should I turn this off?
Yes. Is, I'm just gonna check, is anyone here from CCAT? Is Ms. Phillips, is she's not here tonight? Okay. So next we have the, thank you, I'm sorry, I was just going to the next person, Mr. Ross, I wasn't calling you back. Okay. Associated Student Congress of Baltimore City, is Kyrie Sykes here?
Good evening, madam, Chair and Madam CEO and Board Members. My name is Kyrie Sykes, I am a part of the Associated Student Congress of Baltimore City, I'm the Chief of Staff. I am here tonight to represent the students of Baltimore City, and what we deserve. I've been getting a lot of feedback from students in Baltimore City about the updated grading policy for this school year. The students are saying, with this updated policy, that it's a stress on them. And I can say on my behalf, too, I attend the illustrious Paul Orange Dumber High School. That's a college prep school. So, along with it being a college prep school, we have a 70% assessment grade. And it seems as though, honestly for me, that we're getting way more assessments this year, in quizzes, than we do with homework and classwork. A lot of the students are saying that they wish that they could go back to the grading policy of last year, which I do agree with, because it was just a balance for me, and also the other students, there was a big balance between the grading policy. In addition to that, the students are also feeling that it's hard on them, on themselves, because they're trying to prepare for assessments, although they're trying to keep up their grades and study. And it's a big thing, because also, we just took SATs and ACTs. So we had to practice for that, and then after that, for me, I know that right after SAT, we came back with assessments, that I didn't, you know, didn't even expect. So it's something that I really think that the board should really think about, and about how much it puts a stress on the students. The students are really trying, and I can say that we are really trying. Even I spoke with many teachers, and I spoke with principals of many other schools, they also said that the grading policy, they're not gonna not, you know, not do the grading policy, because it's their job to implement it in their school building. But they think that the grading policy of last year was much easier than this year on the students, and themselves. So, I just want to say that I hope you all do revisit that. It's really stressful, honestly. I did not think coming into this school year, I'm only in the 10th grade. Ninth grade year was hard for me. They said that was the hardest year for you. Coming into the 10th grade, it all hit me so fast, and I just wasn't expecting it. It was like, and also the students are really upset, because it was like, they're not getting a warning. They expected you all to, like, I guess they wanted you all to prepare us for what was coming next. And they did not know that this was coming next. So, it's just, it's just a little bit of confusion. I don't think, and I don't really think that the students understand what the grading policy is, and how it's bettering them in the district. So maybe if we did like some interventions with students, or, you know, even school meetings, or something that the students will understand. Because the teachers had trainings on it, in, you know, meetings and everything like that, but the students don't really understand. They just know that it's a 70% assessment, and you just have to do it. And if you don't do it, your grade drops. I know for me, and I'm gonna keep it 100%, I took assessment in English, and I had an A+ and my grade dropped to F real fast. Don't understand how. I wasn't expecting, I was kind of upset with myself, because I know that I can do harder than that. But it's, like I said, it's trying to balance all those classes, and, you know, you have to take assessments in all of your classes in high school. So it's just trying to get a balance of that, I think. But now, I think that it's working on me. So, I just, I do want to say thank you for having me, and Associated Student Congress of Baltimore City, thank you.
I want to, I wanted to. Thank you for bringing that to our attention, I know Commissioner Richardson wants to.
I want to thank you as well for bringing that to our attention. I have a daughter who just started ninth grade, and is experiencing a similar thing. And the problem is, it feels very difficult to rebound, right? So you mess up on an assessment, like you had an A, and you got a bad assessment, and it went down. It feels like it's difficult to get it pushed back up. So, thank you for bringing that to our attention.
So, yes, and thank you so much for coming in. And so sitting behind you are Dr. Rachel Pfeifer and Dani Heller, who both work on the grading policy. So if you could connect with them, I was texting them while you were speaking, to make sure that you connect with them, so they can hear specifically, you know, the kind of challenges you're experiencing, so we can think about how to, either provide better training, or make changes to address the concerns.
So, and I will just say, Kyrie, thank you for being very clear, identifying in a very concrete way. And I would appreciate, because one of the things, and I think some of this is just, you know, it gets back to how much staff you actually have to help support this. But what would be really helpful is if you, and also some members of the Student Congress, could kind of form a group to share more broadly with our team, what are the kinds of supports that you think would make that transition, right, a lot smoother? And also help you all feel supported, whether it's things that we as the district can do, or that we could advise at the school level that you need. So, I just want to encourage you, when you're having the conversation, to not let it just be one conversation, and to feel free to invite other colleagues, other students, you know, that you lead as part of your organization, to have the, to have the conversation. And thank you for bringing this in October, so that we have time to put some supports in place versus waiting. And so, you know, if I could get 200 leaders like you, we'd be coasting. So I just want, I just want to thank you for your leadership, your professionalism, your thoughtfulness, and just for really, frankly, leading from your seat. So, thank you, Kyrie, I appreciate it.
Okay, we are now going to move to the folks who have signed up for public comment. And our first speaker is Dr. Marvin Cheatham. Doc, where'd you go to college?
Questions should probably be, how many colleges did I go to? Coppinaleonus, of course, but also Sejana Douglas College was where I got the doctorate degree. First, good evening, God bless you, oh, excuse me, I'm in school. Good evening, my name is Marvin Cheatham, I am the President of the Matthew Hinson Neighborhood Association, and the Chief Executive Officer of the Matthew Hinson Community Development Corporation. To our illustrious CEO, to distinguished members of the board, let me first say, and I hope I can get this done very quickly, my mom passed away at 98 a few months ago. In her honor, she was the first PTA President of Matthew Hinson Elementary School back in 1963. In her honor, we have now gotten placed on our school's schedule, an annual fundraiser, where all the proceeds would go to our elementary school for funding. And that would be Sweet Potato Pie Day, which is the 22nd of February of each month. So, any folks would like to steal our concept, we welcome them to join us to raise funds every year for the school that we basically support, and I've done it in her honor. We are requesting the Matthew Hinson Neighborhood Association, a thorough explanation by the board and the human resources of the Baltimore City Public School System, regarding two failing grades that Matthew Hinson Elementary School has received under the current principal and vice principal. And we're asking this to be done at our next community meeting, which is Tuesday, November the 19th. Why are we asking you to do this? Because there has been no communication from Matthew Hinson Elementary School since the 2019-2020 school year regarding the staff. the 2019-2020 school year regarding the status of the school, and the two failing reports that we've gotten from the school system. Our children are at stake at this point. Second, we would like to also request a report on Matthew Henson Elementary School and the 21st Century Building Program at the same neighborhood meeting. Since Matthew Henson won't tell us where we are, we are asking the school board to please render us that information. There are a number of schools that have been already rehabbed, which are much, much younger than Matthew Henson that was built in 1963. Third, as parents, faculty, and community, we voted in spring of 2018 that the number one priority is mental health at Matthew Henson Elementary School. God rest my friend who passed away, and I will know I will see him tomorrow in his passing, but we brought Congressman Cummings and United States Senator Cardin to Matthew Henson shortly after the Freddie Gray riots. And one of the fundings that we got from them, $250,000 for five schools, was for mental health. We've done nothing in Matthew Henson with the serious mental health problem we have. In closing, finally, possibly more importantly, we want the Baltimore City School Board and the school commissioners to seriously consider the reconstitution as the much-needed strategy for education reform for our school, to keep it from closing, unlike Westside Elementary School, unlike Gilmore Elementary School, unlike Roots and Branches. We are not gonna wait till we get the notice that our school is closing before we wave the weird flag, as we did six months ago in this very boardroom, that our school is having problems. We cannot allow our school to be closed, and we ask that you seriously consider reconsideration, reconstitution, and I do have a document to give to you, as well as some links to articles that show the problems we are having with heat, with air conditioning, with leaking water, with retaliation by the Principal and Vice Principal, we are begging you to seriously look at the problems of our school. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. You had, yes, Mr. Gans is gonna get those for us. Thank you so much, Dr. Cheatham. Our next speaker is Catherine Drayton, is it Berber? Barber, I'm sorry.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak. My name is Catherine Drayton Barber. I am a committed educational specialist from the Office of Specialized Instruction, and a proud parent of two students that attend Baltimore City Public Schools. MSD-E states that the number of students with special needs being educated for a majority of the day in self-contained classes, these are classes with only students with disability, also referred to as LRE-C, is not to exceed 10% of this demographic group. Research says that students placed in LRE-C have a higher rate of dropping out of school. Also, students in LRE-C, or students who drop out of school, have a higher rate of incarceration. As previously stated, the state says we are not to exceed 10%. Baltimore City is currently at 20% of their students with special needs being educated in LRE-C. To make matters worse, a majority of these self-contained classes are multi-graded, meaning that a class for students with disabilities will have students of varying grades in the same class at the same time to receive their assigned grade-level curriculum. I have witnessed a special educator attempt to instruct literacy for grades 1 through 8 during the same period. I have received requests for help from special educators, needing support with how to provide math instruction in a class with grades 1 to 5 at the same time. I have talked with several students that have classes, not students, teachers that have had, that have classes with students with grades 3 through 8, with other students with disabilities dropping in throughout the day to receive resource intervention. Most of these students in these classes are African-American, identified to be diploma tracked, and are required to receive instruction at their grade-level curriculum or standard. Sadly, this common practice that is occurring in a majority of our elementary and middle schools of the multi-graded classroom goes against the state-targeted goal, goes against the state's guidance that specially-designed instruction is an addition to a strong first teach of the student receiving their grade-level curriculum, and is a violation of Part 3, Section C of City Schools Equity Policy. This practice is not the trend in neighboring LEAs. The Office of Special Ed and Teaching and Learning have given guidance and learning opportunity to teachers of multi-graded classrooms, but the biggest issue is why do city schools continue this practice? Why do we continue to believe that every individual school is to provide the continuum of LRE placement, unlike neighboring districts? Please understand that this is not just an Office of Special Ed issue. Multiple offices have created this learning environment for the most neediest 15% of our student population, and it will take the Office of Special Ed, Human Capital, Teaching and Learning, and the Office of Schools to first make a clear statement that multi-graded classrooms for students with disabilities who are identified to be diploma-track is unacceptable. And it will take each of these offices to ask themselves, what role will they play in solving this inequitable practice, so that all students will lead and thrive? Thank you.
Thank you. Poppy Michelle is the Fehe.
Hi, good evening, and thank you for meeting with me. My name is Poppy Michelle Fehe, I'm an Ed Specialist from the Office of Specialized Instruction. I'm here this evening to speak about an issue near and dear to me, Baltimore City Public School students and their teachers. More specifically, students with disabilities in multi-graded classrooms and their special ed teachers. For those of you who may not be aware, a multi-grade level class, classrooms, for those of you who may not be aware, a multi-grade level classroom is a class where students have diverse, high-incident disabilities. They receive their special education services for the length of the school day in this classroom. These are not the citywide special programs. These are classrooms that have three or more grade levels with one teacher, with rarely any other adult support. To reiterate, these classrooms can have students from three to five different grade levels with broad spectrum of unique needs, and it is not unheard of to have more than five grade levels with 15 or more students in these classrooms. The students in this setting are our students, who require specially-designed instruction at the most intensive, direct method. As the definition of specially-designed instruction from IDE states, instruction is to the unique student's need. One teacher is to plan and implement this uniquely-designed instruction while addressing grade-level standards in all subject areas, a minimum of three language arts, three mathematics, three social studies, and three science, a minimum. Please remember that this does not include the reading and the math Tier 3 interventions required to narrow the gap of our special needs students. For our teachers, if planning for the minimum number of grade levels that I had stated before, which is three, this is at least 60 minutes per grade level for each standard subject, 120 minutes for math, 120 minutes for language arts, 120 for social studies, and 120 for science. Then, 120 for each Tier 3 intensive instruction. Now, as we all know, planning for unique instruction requires way more than 60 minutes. If one teacher plans 12 hours for one week of instruction, not to mention the added hours required to meet the unique needs of these children, and specific to their IEP, where is this time coming from? Don't our students deserve more than an overextended thinly-spread teacher? Our students deserve a structure where their unique needs are met with maximum attention through efficient planning and instructional time. If teachers do find a way to plan this vast amount of instruction, I ask, are there enough minutes in the day for these grade-level plans to be taught to fidelity that our students deserve? Is there something that goes without? Are there students getting brief overviews of subjects that require deep dives and maximum explicit instruction? I am asking that this structure of self-contained, multi-grade level be considered a critical area that we address in our school system. Don't our students deserve it?
Thank you. Next is Annie Till.
Good evening, school board members. My name is Annie Till, and I'm an extremely passionate special educator. I'm here today to talk about the inequities I've seen and experienced within a multi-grade level, self-contained classroom, in the hopes that there will be a shift in the structures that are put in place. A student with a disability placed in a multi-grade level, self-contained setting presents an obstacle for them achieving their educational potential. That is an inequity in our education system, right here in Baltimore. The fact is, when you are a student in a multi-grade level, self-contained classroom, you have significant deficits that impact your ability to be successful in a general education setting. These are our neediest students, our lowest-performing students, they deserve and need continuous access to their grade-level general education curriculum in the form of specially-designed instruction, and research-based interventions to close the gap. But yet, we have our lowest-performing students receiving the least amount of instructional time in multi-grade level classrooms. Due to the needs of having multiple grades in the same classroom, the students are not having teacher-directed lessons with their grade-level content curriculum on a daily basis. Sometimes it is every two days for two grade-level classrooms, sometimes it's every four days for grade-level classrooms. This doesn't even include the implications for the teacher in terms of intentional planning and adapting curriculum to close the achievement gap, as well as not having the opportunity to collaborate in their building and plan with other multi-grade level classrooms, like our general education peers do. Our general education students receive 90 minutes a day for ELA in their ELA block, and 90 minutes a day for their math block. When you are a student in a multi-grade level classroom, you do not have access to these same time blocks. That self-contained teacher who has to teach each grade-level curriculum that is present in their class, as well as ensure that the students are receiving their research-based interventions to continue the work to close the gap, this needs to happen at least three times a week for 30 minutes for both their reading intervention and their math intervention. Depending on how many grade levels you have in the multi-grade level classroom, you may have three different reading intervention groups, and the same for math, impacting that precious academic block time. So, within that same 90-minute block that our general education peers are teaching ELA and math, our self-contained, multi-grade level teachers need to teach one of the grade-level curriculums within their classroom, and their research-based intervention, and then rotate the next day with another grade-level curriculum and another intervention. And this rotation goes on for however many grade levels you have in that classroom. As the numbers, as the numbers of rotations increase, the access to curriculum and interventions decrease, as the number of grade levels increase in the classroom. It is well-known that our general education students far outperform our students with disabilities on state tests like PARC. Perpetuating this gap, this practice of multi-grade level classrooms does not help to close that achievement gap. This is a district-wide issue. By allowing this to continue, we are not addressing equity. This does not ensure equitable access to education services and inclusion for students in all academic indicators, as indicated in the Equity Principles. My concern is the role we are playing in the trajectory of our students who are in multi-grade level classrooms, who is really losing out? There needs to be a shift. What role can you play in stopping this inequity? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Shannon Patrick.
Hello, I'm here to wrap it up for talking about multi-grade classrooms. So, my name is Shannon Patrick, I'm a special educator at Harper Heights, and I'm also concerned, so teaching in multi-grade classrooms is an impossible task, so let me go over a typical scenario. So, imagine teaching three different grade levels, and teaching each grade level their science, social studies, English Language Arts, math, phonics, and health contents. Don't forget about your research-based interventions. Also, you only get one hour of planning time each day, if that. Even though your students test at a kindergarten or first grade level according to their diagnostic and formal assessments, you still have to teach to and expose them to their grade-level standards, since their assessments such as ANET or MCAT are standard-based according to their grade level, and because these students are also on a diploma track. So, now it's time to teach. Eureka Math recommends that lessons should be taught in 90-minute blocks. When you teach three or more grade levels, there is not enough time in the day to teach each grade level for 90 minutes. So, if in that 90-minute block, you teach each grade level to their grade-level content for about 30 minutes each day. When students are not with you, they're either on a computer, completing a blended learning activity, if technology is available, or completing independent work on their instructional level. Essentially, when students are in multi-grade classrooms, they are losing over 60 minutes of instruction compared to their non-disabled peers. The same concept applies when teachers have to teach more than one grade level of wit and wisdom. The students in our schools who have the greatest academic needs are getting the least amount of instruction because of scheduling and unrealistic expectations. To sum it up for you, the amount of time that teachers have to teach grade-level instruction is limited. There's not enough time to cover all of the material needed in each lesson and stay on pacing. Multi-grade level classrooms are constantly being compared to single-grade classrooms, because special educators are held to the same expectations as general educators. To put it in a context, as multi-grade special educators are expected to teach all of their curriculum for all the grades in one class for every single subject they teach, while keeping up with school-wide pacing expectations. Teaching in a multi-grade classroom means more planning, more preparation, more organization, and many times less support, because most mentors/administrators don't know how to support a teacher teaching three or more grade levels at one time. So, I pose this question, what role can you play in stopping this inequity? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you so much for pulling, bringing this to my attention and the board's attention. I think all of us are really deeply impacted by that. And I just had a question for clarity. I'm assuming that bringing this to the board, this was not your first attempt. If someone could talk to me about sort of the steps that you've taken up to this point in order to get us here, that would be really helpful for me to have a better context around sort of understanding needs and so forth.
So, I know last year, we have had focus groups with teachers of multi-graded classrooms. And because I sit in teaching and learning, we have provided professional learning opportunities for these teachers. The special ed liaisons go into the schools to support, and the Office of Special Ed has also stated that schools are not to exceed two grades within a multi-graded classroom, however the practice continues. So, I am not clear if it is because there is not perhaps a stronger statement around where we stand, what we believe is right for students. I think that often Baltimore City does things in its own way, particularly when it comes to our students with special needs, and it has not caught up with the LEAs that around, that are around us. I've been teaching for, well, been in education for 27 years, started in Baltimore City, taught over a decade in Howard County, came back to Baltimore City. Howard County, came back to Baltimore City, and I have colleagues who have taught in Montgomery County, PG County. And this practice of multi-graded classrooms, I can say from personal experience, does not happen in those districts. So we're often, again, from where I said, asked to support teachers with how to make a three-graded classroom, five-graded classroom, on up work. But it's the elephant in the room. I can dress it up, I can give you different flow charts, and these teachers are working very hard. We do early release planning with multi-graded classroom teachers. We do systemic PDs with multi-graded classroom teachers. Again, we do focus groups. But the biggest issue is really, this is an inequitable learning environment. And to put students with special needs in classrooms where they're receiving less education is not the way we close an achievement gap. And also, you just think about the social-emotional of a student. If I'm in fifth grade and in the same class as a person in first grade, what is the emotional impact for that student? And if you were a parent of that first grader, do you want them in the same classroom as a middle schooler? So there's a social-emotional impact as well. So thank you.
Thank you. And I want to thank, I know we didn't respond to each person because I saw that you were all coming with the same topic. So again, we want to thank you for bringing that forward and also letting us know that that has been a discussion that you've had. I know Dr. Santalisis wants to respond, but please know that it has been heard, and it is an issue that we know that we need to take a look at. It is, as you said, practice. It is not what the guidance is. And so we're hearing you.
Thank you.
Dr. Santalisis.
Yeah, and I just, I want to also reiterate, and I was glad that, you know, that Chair Chinia said that we were waiting, right? Because we wanted to get through. Two, I just want to say publicly, I have been in at least two of your classrooms, right? And I know that you are not just kind of piecing stuff together and saying that. So I guess you have the advantage of the fact that I actually walked to classrooms, so I know how you teach. And I do think that what we need to do, I don't want to just give a pat answer and come up and say, oh yeah, this, this, and this is what we're doing. I think it's a boiling point issue that has been aggravated through the adoption of more rigorous curriculum. When you have a lower grade curriculum, you can patch it together, which many of you were doing. I remember you, your first year teaching, and I came in the classroom, you remember? And, you know, when we had a lower-level curriculum, you could kind of sort of piece it together, but you're absolutely right. The same thing we heard about the literacy curriculum earlier. All that has done, and I just said this to the board chair, is it has just magnified what has been an issue. And you're right, our guidance, I think what you have surfaced for us, is that our guidance around the two years, I didn't hear you, you know, pushing back, right, on that. And I just want everybody to know, look, we have challenges, like the whole state does, in finding appropriate staff, right? If I had like 400 of the folks that are sitting here, whose classes I have been in, it would help alleviate some of the challenges. Nonetheless, it does not now justify you all having to struggle in this way. So like the board chair, I just want you to know that you've been heard. Like I said, you picked the right people to come because I know how, I've seen you teach. And we just will, I don't want to give a pat answer tonight. So let's make sure that we sit, think through kind of where the gap is, because clearly there's a gap, and it's not just your schools. And I want you to know that. This is not just about, now we got to go to Hartford Heights and figure out what's going on in Hartford Heights. Because I have been to other schools where I've heard the same thing. It's just you all have come forward, and frankly, it is not a surprise to me that now in the second year of Witten Wisdom adoption, on top of a more rigorous math curriculum, that this would be coming to the surface. So I just want to say publicly, so everybody hears, I don't want anybody's principals pulling them up because folks came and very professionally, and you did do it very professionally, right, stated where you were. So we will do a follow-up, we will make sure that it is ongoing, but I just want everybody to know, I don't want a pat answer for somebody to come up and say, this, this, this is what we're doing. I've been in your classes, your struggle is real, and now it's a day of reckoning, and we are going to have to work through this. So thank you for doing that.
Like Dr. S said, thank you guys, it was great. But my question is, and I'm really ignorant to this conversation, so if anyone could tell me, that would be great. But my question is, why was this started? Why was it even a thought that it was possible for us to incorporate different grade levels into one classroom? Because if I'm in general, like General Studies or whatever it's called, that wouldn't happen. So why would that even start in a special education?
So I think, one, we've got to get under this, you know, I mean, I can give you some surface reasons. I think we need to actually hear from principals around the pressure they're under with staffing. I've had a number of principals who have said, I have a special education vacancy all year, it does not get filled. And so what they are trying to do oftentimes is piece together what they perceive as their best. You have teachers who want to do, and again, you pick the right ones because these people do teach well, right? Who are trying to piece together things at the same time. And what happens is, as the gap gets larger, and you've got classes with eight or nine kids in them, but with five or six different levels, it's not fiscally possible to have five or six teachers. So what it means, and I love the push about where we are with our practice in Baltimore City relative to that, what it's going to require is us to accelerate some of the conversations we had already been having. But what we're hearing tonight, what I'm hearing tonight, is that this really is the convergence of a storm that is predictable. That's how I know what they're saying is true, because I've been watching it bubble. And now we're to the point where, when you get Witten Wisdom as opposed to something that's lower level, now the band of achievement has expanded even more. And so they're right, they're sitting there. I visited classes last week with teachers who were like, I have five different levels of kids in one class, the principal is waiting for, you know, so when people say what the need is, right? This is why you need a good first teach, because let's be clear, there are some of these kids who are being identified, who if we had taught them to read well the first time around, right? Am I wrong or am I right? Thank you. See, and I got the teachers clapping, so you know it's real, right? If we had taught them to read well the first time, then they wouldn't have five or six levels. They might actually only have two, had we done it right the first time. And all that does is exacerbate then, the children who really do require the supports that these folks are trained to give them, but we're mixing them up with kids that just weren't taught well. And so what that does is expand the number. See, I told you I was listening, y'all are nodding, right? And you know why I know this? Because when I go into schools, this is what teachers tell me. So it's now, we have just this blossoming of young people who are in classrooms, multiple levels, with more rigorous curriculum. So it's really a day of reckoning. And on top of that, you know, you can talk to Chief Grant Skinner, we're going to have to get under the HC. They have special educator vacancies that are there in August and are still there in February. So any special educators that want a job now? Come one, come all, right? We'll take them. But we've got to get underneath it. It's not enough just to acknowledge it anymore, and at least what I am hearing is like timeout. We've got to do something different. But it's a convergence of a lot of things.
One more question for clarity. So given the policy that we had just adopted about teacher evaluation, this context would not serve this population well. Are we taking into account sort of how we support teachers with? Yeah.
I mean, I think it's a question about kind of the rubric and matching what the context that particular teachers are addressing and what the drivers are with that. And so we absolutely, Commissioner, should be taking that into account. I want us to be real, though, about the particular populations we're talking about. Like I think having this, and you're absolutely right, that conversation in the context of the rubric development, right? And revision makes sense, but this is still not the majority of folks teaching in the school district. But I agree with you on that.
Again, thank you. And we will be following to see how, you know, how things are addressed. So please know that, again, you have been heard. Okay. Next, we have Mr. James Williams.
I wasn't disangry until I just heard what I just heard. I'm even angrier now than I was when I got here. Defend the poor and fatherless. Do justice to the afflicted and needy. That's who we talking about here, specifically needy. Those children need a lot. Deliver the poor and needy. Rid them of, out of the hands of the wicked. They know not neither will. They understand. They walk on in darkness. Those children are in the dark. Brother, Commissioner, please pay attention to what I'm saying. I didn't come here for you to be goofing off. I meet regularly with people in this building. I take my time out of my life to do this for children who need help. Has anybody here heard of multi-tiered systems of support? Ms. Chinia, you're the only one? Anybody else here? Okay. I met with a person down here concerning that because that is designed to help children who have had more than one retention and are behind grade levels, okay? It's not adequately funded down here. That is why, when I'm out working, I see brothers standing out in the street lost, with that lost look on their face, because the system failed them. Now, this ship is not turning around. It's going in the wrong direction. PARC showed you that. The PARC scores. The achievement gap is 30 points between black and white. 30 freaking points! That's unacceptable. English Learning Language Arts, 3.1 down for 10th graders on a PARC assessment. 10th grade algebra, down, 2.5 percent. That's not achievement. Citywide schools may be doing wonderful, but these own schools are drowning. What happened in Harrisburg, people? The school system went in a tank because tough decisions weren't made. Student support, multi-tier student support, was supposed to be funded. It isn't. Until you get student support coordinators in these schools, those students identified, guess what? They're going to be robbing some of your relatives, or you! Because when they drop out, they become criminals. So y'all better wake up! Because crime is going to visit somebody in your family because these children didn't get help, and they floundered, and they're drowning, and they're lost. Student support needs adequate funding for student support, period. Multi-tier support, there's a guy here who can implement that, but he doesn't have any funding. We've got to get it together, or sooner or later, the system is going to be taking over, period.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. I think your testimony is a great additional call to action for everyone for Thursday, is it Thursday? For Thursday evening to be at Dorothy Height, when we talk about the recommendations that have come from the Kerwin Commission, which would, in fact, help to do exactly what you're asking, to fund all the things that our students need in Baltimore City. And so I would encourage everyone, if you listen to Mr. Williams tonight, please join us and be at Dorothy Height Elementary School on Thursday evening, 6 o'clock? 6 o'clock.
Remember, if you don't do it and you don't stand up for these kids, you're going to be visited. Somebody, you watch the news, you see crime.
Well, I think some of us may have already been visited and don't want it again. But we will be there with you. Thank you. Thank you.
Three minutes is not enough. Okay, so is the board gonna, like, put out a policy directive saying multi-grade special ed classes are no more?
Ms. Truheart, I think what the issue, and I was trying to say that, is there is guidance around those and what we need to...
So fire somebody.
What we need to do is make sure people are following it. Yes, it's an accountability piece that we'll pick up.
I keep telling y'all, I'm available, okay? All right. Policy JKA about interventions, every time this comes up for renewal, update, or something, I say the same thing. There is no budget line for this in the budget. And frequently, I'm hearing, well, we don't have money for interventions at schools. Figure it out. Put a dollar figure with every one of these policies y'all passing, because it doesn't make sense that there's not enough. Some young folks from here at North Avenue came to visit me to explain the school safety stuff y'all have done in the dark. And I reiterate that I was in Annapolis this last session. I introduced a piece of legislation around auxiliary school safety teams to train our young people, to include them in the safety of their schools. I was fought at every step of the way by the district office because you assured me we would be involved. You failed to do that. I'm still unhappy. I'm not sure how I'm going to react because I'm a little busy right now. There was a bunch of contracts on the agenda today, and those contracts need to be very clear about how many black people get jobs out of it. Because I'm tired of this foolishness. You're spending millions and millions of dollars, and as I stated last time I was here, I went to the city council over a $289,000 contract that wasn't hiring black people, right? Fix it. Before you sign off any more contracts, you better get a report from somebody telling you how many black people get jobs. Baltimore's biggest problem right now is unemployment. I sat down with somebody who had a fact sheet and said, oh, well, this neighborhood's got a 30% unemployment. The state average is three. A neighborhood in Baltimore with a 30% unemployment rate? Do y'all get the math? It ain't hard, right? This is outrageous. And if you got money that people are getting jobs from and they're not black, they don't look like me, then you're failing. My clean and green team is going to come into fruition this Thursday, and I'm really excited about it. I interviewed 12 young people last week. I've selected nine. And of the nine, I probably would have been counseled not to take a couple because one dropped out in the ninth grade, two dropped out in the 10th grade. The ninth grader sat through the interview process acting like a ninth grader, and I had to pull him up by the collar and said, son, you're a grown man. You better start acting like it. These kids need help, and we're going to give them help. I'm starting with nine. I am telling everybody within earshot, I'm coming for more money. And that may mean your money. You got that? Because if you're not spending it to employ these young brothers and educate them and give them skills, then you're part of the problem. This city has an unemployment problem, period.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to check to see if there are any additional items that folks would like to have removed from the consent agenda. If not, is there a... If not, is there a motion that we vote on that? Commissioner Bondima, Second Commissioner Richardson, all those in favor? Chinia? Okay. Six, two absent, three absent. We have one item that was pulled, and that was 2.02. And and that was just for the vote, correct? Okay, so is there a motion for 2.02, which is Leaders of Tomorrow Youth Center? 12.02, I'm sorry. Looking right at it. It's moved by Commissioner Berkeley. Is there a second? Okay, Commissioner Reed, all those in favor? Reed, Chinia, Berkeley, those opposed? Okay. Two, is that? Okay, so that one does not pass. There were three in favor and two, and then three absent. So I think we are now up to the Communications and Community Engagement Office overview.
Good evening, everybody. I've asked my team to come just in case you have questions at the end of the presentation. But our first one is to acknowledge that there's so many members of my team who are here tonight, who are so excited that the board is hearing this presentation, and so I just want them to stand up quickly and acknowledge that they're actually behind me supporting this. So I have-
Come on, y'all, stand up.
I just, I love the fact that we didn't ask them to show up. They are here because they care about this work as much as I do, and I just have a phenomenal team, and I'm so excited I get to do this work. So I just wanted to acknowledge that they are here. So, all right. I'm gonna go quickly because my presentation is a little long, and I heard that I talked too fast from one of my friends who's told me that I talk a little too quickly. So I'm gonna slow down. I'm gonna I'm gonna do Dr. Durant, I'm gonna go slow to go fast quoting Dr. Durant.
Yes, I'm guilty. Thank you.
That's right. You didn't tell me directly. I just got a little birdie told me, Mr. Reed, Mr. Reed. So first, I want to start out with, usually we have a video at the end of the CEO's presentation that talks about something great that's happening at city schools, and I wanted the opportunity tonight to do it during my presentation to show you a video. It's a little longer than you're normally used to hearing, but I want to show you the city schools back to school night. We had 2,500 families show up to support and get engaged in city schools blueprint. So go ahead and show the video, please.
Hey, it's Bryce Taylor.
And Imani Humphries-Torres.
And we're here at the Maryland Science Center for the most epic kickoff to the school year.
It's the Citywide Be More Me Back to School Night, and we cannot wait to show you all the amazing things students and their families are doing together.
Interactive STEM activities. Silent yoga.
Art and culture exhibition, resources for families, amazing performances, and so much more.
Watch me, watch me, oh, 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 oh. Watch me, watch me, oh. Watch me, watch me, oh. Watch me, watch me, oh, oh, oh.
So this is Neighborhood Row, an area where families can get access to tons of resources and experience some fun entertainment along the way.
From activities to encourage parent involvement in early learning to the Be More Me Project that celebrates our city's rich history, Bass is gonna help us. Check it out. Let's go, Bass.
Thanks, guys. So here I am in Neighborhood Row. Over here, we have all these medical displays where families are interacting, and over to the right, we have all these resources full of engagement. Let's go check it out. So can you like explain to us what's going on at your table today?
Yeah, so this is the Be More Me table. Where Be More Me lives in social studies, it's a curriculum in grades six through 11 where students get to learn about the rich history of Baltimore, explore their identity, all of those things. And so we have these little blocks, and people can write whatever they want on it, and then I'm crazy gluing it to the city skates.
All right, thanks for the insight. Now let's check out Wholeness Row, where we will see a ton of talent from city school students.
Performances, demos, and silent yoga all show the well-rounded experiences happening in city schools. Let's go see it.
So I'm here now, and I'm about to try some silent yoga.
In a lot of times when students are getting in trouble in school, they're having problems focusing, it's that part of the brain that's activated. By learning different breathing techniques and how to meditate while doing yoga, the students can move that activity from the back of the brain to the front of the brain where all the higher functioning levels are. So it helps with their schoolwork, it helps with focus, it helps with even discipline and behavioral issues. While the parents are here with their children, they can learn how to do it themselves or take it with their child, and it can be all fun for the whole family.
She's in the middle, she's found her balance. All right, now let's go.
Every classroom has a calming corner. Every classroom might have a peace corner. And what you can see tonight is you can see the different areas that's within our rooms.
Make your way to that B-Funk next showcase on the third floor.
And move.
Kick it with your grip, step by step, here's what you gotta do.
Um, the song really about just getting kids pumped up to go back to school because just to get them motivated.
Now, that was cool. We're at Academic Row, and what a night. Behind us right now are some activities and robotics.
And we will focus on the new wit and wisdom curriculum and the importance of reading as a family. Let's go.
The curriculum for K to eight wit and wisdom, we're giving parents some tips on how they can support their children at home, and they also are getting a free grade level book from Scholastic.
And counting to the stars at the edge of the sea, I can't help but feel they will put this-
Greats and readers, we actually empower parents to understand how to be their child's first teacher. We give them ideas and strategies about how to get their kids excited about reading because we know the child's excited about reading, they're gonna read more.
Why do you think it's important for kids to come out with their parents?
Because it gets the parents involved, and they can also know where their children are and where they can go as far as like what books they can read and things of sorts. Support your children in any way you can, and definitely when it comes to their education.
With over 2,000 people coming out for this wonderful family experience-
Everyone had a little something to share about this fun-filled night.
The Science Center is really fun.
Your kids get to experience, and it's just, it helps open their minds, and they appreciate school much better.
Well, I went to different booths around, like I got different bags and a water bottle, and I did some really cool activities.
All of our families, our students, our school communities to come together for a night of learning and fellowship and fun.
Thank you so much for coming out. I want everybody to have a fabulous school year.
Wow, I am beat. We've had such a great time here at the Citywide Be More Me Back to School Night.
I couldn't agree more. It's been wonderful seeing students and families enjoy the amazing performances and take advantage of those resources that we have here tonight. It's been Bryce Taylor.
And Imani Humphries-Torres with the City School Student Media Team. See you next time.
So I just want to quickly acknowledge that our student media team is amazing, and Jim Madubie has worked so closely and Jewel Carter with those students to do fantastic presentations that she will see throughout the year. So I just want to acknowledge them. I also want to acknowledge the all-hands-on-deck effort that the team put forward to put on this Back to School Night that was focused on connecting parents to the academic success of their children, which is our next slide. It's our call to action, which is, I talked to Dr. S. when I first took on the role, and I said, what does success look like to you in all three departments? And I thought I would get something specific about each area that we're working in, and I'll go to the areas in a moment. And what she said to me was, the focus actually is, how do we connect parents to the academic success of their children? And that has become our call to action. We've based our theory of action around it, our goals, et cetera. But there's three main goals out of this, is to improve family experience in all three departments, to create access points for information, and to believe in caring about our families and communities. So here's a great picture of one of our families from our Back to School Night. To fulfill our call to action, we must work to shift the mindset and culture of the district and understanding that I believe that everybody thinks that parents are valued partners in success, right? But the actions, the intentionality about how we engage parents is not where it needs to be. And so our work is to make sure that we shift all three focus departments to really think about how parents are at the forefront of everything that we're doing. So we have a merger of three departments. This is new to the district. The first office is Communications, second office is Engagement, the third is Enrollment Choice and Transfer. The idea behind this merger is that these are all the three public-facing departments at the district level that are merged together. And so thinking about crosslines, their work intersects already all the time, but how these three departments can work together to improve the parent experience for the district is why the merger happened. We are working with Communications to message our brand and tell our story and provide better access to parents around our academic priorities. The Engagement Office last year planned over 176 community and school-based events. And last loan in ECT, which is enrollment choice and transfer acronym, we saw over 10,000 families. Just in the summer rush this year, we saw 7,000 families during summer rush, just to give you an idea of the enormity of the work that these groups are doing. We want to leverage the group, these three groups to improve our connection with, in contact with families. Okay, so the mission and theory of action, and I don't like reading slides, I think this is really important, that we want to be the systemic link between city schools, district, and its schools, families, communities, and partners. Our mission is to develop and cultivate effective school and family-community relationships to leverage those relationships as key resources in the success of students and schools. So our theory of action is, building positive and trusting relationships, and creating strategic collaborations aligned to the blueprint will help families be engaged and linked to students' success. We want to change the hearts and minds of our staff and connect parents and families in a more authentic way, and this is based on feedback from our parents, partners, school-based staff over the last three years about what they'd like to see us happen. We're prioritizing professional development for all of our teams, and we're doing training around best practices for dual-capacity framework, where we actually build the capacity of parents to engage, but also the capacity of staff to engage with parents. Historically, there's been this focus on, we need to make sure parents are ready to come to us, we need to make sure we're ready to receive parents in the way we want them to receive them. So I believe in our team. It will take time, but I think we have a fantastic team to get this work accomplished. Another one of our fantastic families at Back to School Night. So what we've learned, and this presentation was developed with the board, so the past 90 days, I'm now in my sixth month, I think, at the district. What we've learned is we have talented and skilled and passionate staff. We do need to create new systems and structures to make the work more effectively operating in the district, and we need to tell our story and change the narrative for city schools. We have capacity with our team, but we just are under-resourced and understaffed a little bit in some of our departments. We have five staff in enrollment choice and transfer that saw those 10,000 families last year. So one is improving practice, so all those families will feel the need, they have to come down to the district to be seen here. And once we improve practice, and we'll have a better understanding of how many staff we actually need to accommodate the number of families that are coming through the doors, if we can lessen those numbers. We also have, for example, one person who's doing social media and website together, and we're pleased to know that we are remediating our website and we are getting it where it needs to be, but I want him to focus on social media. I want him to get out there and training our staff on how to get good posts up. Dr. S. has been doing a great job at putting things up on Twitter and social media. Thank you very much. But we're gonna have him come and train the board and the chiefs as well about how we create ambassadors and personnel who will sell the story and tell the stories of the district. And, okay, we want to revise our tactics to make sure that everyone knows more about district initiatives. Our blueprint beyond that is to improve stakeholder perception by telling our story in a different way. So what we've learned recently, we have to fill currently seven positions in my department. I won't go through them all, but they're pretty big weighty positions. The Director of Communications needs to be filled, our Media Manager needs to be filled, our Director for Enrollment Choice and Transfer needs to be filled. I want to just acknowledge that the staff has been working tirelessly to sort of make sure these gaps aren't felt by the district, but it's a lot on the staff to sort of get those done. So it's a priority for us right now is to get those positions filled. We have hired our Director of Family and Community Engagement, our Family Engagement, which you heard from earlier, Shayna McIver. We've hired my Special Assistant, Corinda Liberto, who's also back here, and I'm very excited to have them here. But we have to, we have a lot to do to get our staff and and structures set up in the right way. We're also redefining our reporting structures, looking at how businesses report to each other and separating community engagement and family engagements, so they can be really dedicated to those areas. We're also offering coaching, as Shayna mentioned earlier, with the management folks that they've been having. We want to foster collaboration among all three departments, and all all three divisions will have strategic plans and work plans developed so that we're clear on what the outcomes are supposed to be, what, how they're aligned to the goals, and what supports they need in order to do their work. So we want to reposition city schools as a highly effective district. We want to establish a common definition for family and community engagement, and we want to stop these negative frames that I think are perpetuating across our district. So we have this negative frame of corruption, violence, and incompetence that is just unacceptable for our district, and this is an outside negative perception that we want to combat. We want to redefine those fame reframes, to have a different counter-narrative where all of our students feel loved, safe, smart, and supported in our schools, where all of our parents feel valued and heard as real partners in their children's education, and where all of our partners feel informed and accountable to the success of our children and families. So we also had a parent survey. We looked at that data to understand what the parent survey was telling us. We had a steady increase. Over 2,000 additional parents this year took the survey last school year, sorry, than before, but we also saw a slight decrease in the satisfaction across different areas around the parents. But this is an opportunity or a tipping moment for us. If we have more parents taking the survey, more parents say they want to be engaged. Instead of those those slight declines, and they're 0.2 percent, 1 percent, et cetera, we want them to go up. So parents have more satisfaction with safety, with climate, with feeling like their child is supported in school. We also have, looking at our heat data, heat is when parents can call in and ask for concerns or help around their educational system. We're looking at the data to understand and be informed by what parent experience really is and how we can actually improve that process. We have a huge focus on customer service and building trusting relationships within that. I mentioned the dual-capacity framework already to build our partnership with the family and staff, and I want to acknowledge that ESA requires that we must build the capacity of staff and build trusting, authentic relations with the families in order to support students' success. With that, we're gonna hope to tier our schools. Right now, we have a 1 to 30 ratio for our family and community engagement specialists. We're working to add additional specialists if possible through Title I grant funding, and then tier our schools to prioritize where they focus their time and energy. So instead of focusing on 30 schools this year, they have a focus of nine or 10 schools where they can really go deep in training staff and building plans together to create family and community engagement opportunities robustly at schools. We also are working with OAA, which I've been pleased to say. We're looking at Panorama. It's a perception survey. It's looking at how parents are perceived by staff and administrators in schools, and we're not gonna do this survey by individual school, but by just district level, because I don't want this to be an accountability measure for individual schools. What I want to know, and I want staff to honor, answer honestly, is how they actually feel about our parents engaging in education. Do they think they're present? Do they feel like a parent has to be physically present at a school in order for them to be engaged in their child's learning? Those kinds of questions will come up on the survey. Working with OAA right now to design that survey. Next, we have, we want to create a very trusting relationship and actually know that parents get the feedback that we have from the surveys. So we're working through the survey findings to make sure we know, we share out with parents, let them know that we've heard them. We're also partnering with the Schools Office, OAA, Teaching and Learning in the Office of of Wholeness, to ensure alignment for what parents' needs are with what our family community engagement specialists are bringing actually to schools. So from, we also heard very clearly that the board, and I helped start this process when I was still on the board, the Enrollment Task Force, where there were, there were three workgroups around customer service, marketing, and actual enrollment itself. We've actually dived into all the recommendations from the Enrollment Task Force, we're working through them right now. One of the things we're doing is in response to that is to develop a marketing and branding campaign for the district. We have an external consultant who's helping us right now go through focus groups and think through what are the messages we want to put out about city schools, how are people who are currently receiving the city schools' brand, what are they thinking of perceptions, et cetera, and how do we modify that to improve that? We're also in the early stages of looking through creating a welcome center at the district. We had an architect who volunteered to walk through the building and help us think through where could a welcome center go, but the welcome center would be a place where people could actually come and engage with city schools directly, and they could actually get a person, a one-on-one contact with somebody to get the support that they need. Right now, our families actually go to the enrollment office, even though they may not have an enrollment concern, to see somebody physically present at the building. So if we create a welcome center, we also have to redesign the culture of the building to understand that all of our offices have to be accountable to that welcome center and have a staff person that comes when needed to meet with the family. It may not solve the question immediately when a parent comes, but at least the parent will be heard and seen in the immediate and know that we actually care about their concerns and want to support them. It's one of our great, we had a million family, a billion Father March last month, one of our pictures of our great dads and our kids at that million Father March, one of my favorite pictures of the slide, because he has his dad sign on, just to know that he's a proud father. But it's also about intentionality, it's one of our community engagements of getting our fathers into our schools and knowing that they are welcome in our buildings, we want them as partners in their children's education. So the work ahead, we have a core team comprised of directors and managers from all three departments. We meet regularly to review priorities, assess culture improvement, and synerg- We meet regularly to review priorities, assess culture improvement and synergy across our division. We're working with human capital and leadership development, teaching and learning to link engagement, discerning learning, and pre-K to increase enrollment. We actually created a pre-K enrollment work group so that when April runs around, we actually have a stronger pre-K enrollment early on, but it takes cross-department engagement, not just our team, to make these things happen. So we're going to go through our next steps and our goals. There's lots of goals on this slide. I'm only going to highlight the ones that are bolded, and you can read through the deck later to see the additional goals, but the first goal for Communications will be to do the district's blueprint strategy communicated better to our families, including the creation of academic parent guides, which we're so happy to have. This year, we will have grades first through eighth, where parents will receive guides that outline what's happening with their children's education. It will not only help parents better understand our blueprint, but also help them go to a classroom and engage with their teacher about, here's what my child should be learning right now, what's happening in my classroom, so they can be more informed consumers of their children's education. We also are developing the marketing and branding campaign, as I mentioned earlier, shifting brand perceptions so that every student, parent, teacher, and staff member feels that they are part of our community, a valued part of our community, and then develop the ambassador program, as I mentioned earlier. We're also working with the engagement team, our community schools work. We had 50 schools, 50 community schools. At the end of last school year, we now have 126. I have three new staff, two new staff that have been hired, hopefully hiring one more person. We've launched 76 community schools since July 1. We've hired most of the people. It's been a mix between district hire and lead agency hire, but I'm extremely proud of the work that our community schools team has done so far to get this up and running. We're really excited about what's happening with training. We've trained principals, we've trained the coordinators, and now we're looking at developing needs assessments, program plans, and site location in the school buildings. Happy to give more about that at another time. We're also launching a partnership database. It's a resource repository to align our partnership strategy so that partners, it'll be a match.com function where schools can put on what they need, partners can put on what they have available, and they can match with each other, but it'll also have an administrative function where a district can actually manage the breadth of partnerships we have across the district. So instead of having, is it this person on point, who's that on point? Our office doesn't need to manage every partnership. We want to have as a strategy so that we know who's on point, if there's an MOU developed, what's the agreement made? So if somebody else is reaching out to their partner, they can go in the database and find that out, that information out. We're also going to build the capacity of staff, parents, and families to support decision-making and advocacy and learning at home. Our last department is the Enrollment Office. We are doing a root cause analysis of what's happening in the Enrollment Choice and Transfer Office to unearth what are the systems changes that need to occur to make the process better. We are creating a work group on how to increase enrollment, and we're going to improve our customer service experience in ECT. We have a root cause analysis, as I mentioned, and we want to reevaluate our current choice process. Right now, we're going to do small changes to our choice process this fall by increasing the middle school options that are available to families, and we'll continue to grow that. I want the choice process to happen and change overnight, that's not possible, but the small win we can have for this fall is that all of our K through eight options that have seats will be available in our choice process. Almost a third of our families coming in this summer for our enrollment transfer window were middle school families who were displeased with our middle school choice. So we have a short-term win by making sure that our K through eight options who have seats will be included in our choice process, so parents have a real, live choice in the short term for those. Quick accomplishments to date, we have trained city schools' principals and leaders to become ambassadors and influencers to help them get social media up and tell the story and change the narrative about city schools. We're also going to do that, as I said, with the chiefs and the board. We also collaborate with a marketing and branding firm. We are supporting and managing the summer transfer window where we saw 7,000 families. We also did physical improvements to the ECT office. If you walk by there, you can actually see, it looks more welcoming and exciting. We also commandeered the boardroom. Thank you to all of you who left the board to let us have meetings in here, because families had a place to sit. Families had a place to walk through an organized process to turn in their paperwork, so they weren't sitting, for example, for last summer. A family could sit for two hours, wait to be seen, and then only to be told, we don't have the right paperwork. We changed those systems so families walk in and the first thing we do is check your paperwork. We also had a video running so families could actually see what was acquired for enrollment practices to ease the parent experience in our enrollment. So was it stressful for some of us from having 7,000 families? Yes, but was it easier? I will say, I quote Ms. Loretta all the time, who was at the front desk out here. She said, "Do you have something to do with this over here?" And I said, "Yes, I do," and she said, "Oh, this is the best I've ever seen it." And that's a huge compliment coming from Ms. Loretta. So thank you, Ms. Loretta, for that. I know, right, Brandon? And I just appreciate that people had recognized that we are trying to improve the parent experience in this process. Along with engagement, we, oh, I'm sorry, we collaborated with the Office of Literacy and Learning to create the Multilingual Enrollment Support Center as well on the third floor, so that families who had different languages than spoken in ECT could actually go up to the third floor and actually be enrolled through that process, and we're so grateful to that office for that support. And then in engagement, we are doing the community schools strategy, as I said, doing the dual capacity framework, and then leading the partnership database. So upcoming opportunities for Office of Community Engagement, these are a few. We have our CEO community conversations we are launching this year. We had one last month at Roland Park around literacy blueprint strategy. We had about 20, 25 families show up, but we had over 2,000 views on Facebook. Every single one of these will go Facebook Live, so folks can actually watch them and then go back and see them later if they want to see what's happening in the CEO conversations. We're also going to get the CEO out to a plethora of community associations and neighborhood groups, et cetera, faith-based groups this fall and beyond, so that she can be in front of people, understanding what the district blueprint is all about and what our road is to Kerwin. We have another CEO conversation coming up on November 19. Topics include be more me and equity in the curriculum, the road to Kerwin, and we're having a parent/teacher panel about how we work together to improve the parent experience of the district. We have our choice fair coming up on December 7. We hope that you all will join us for that. We have our budget priority engagement sessions on number 13. It'll be the youth conversation specifically, 14, multilingual families. On the 20th, we'll have our community-based organizations and our PTO and BTU, et cetera, and the number 21st is general. Now, anybody can come to any of them, but we're just letting you all know those are the target groups we're focusing on those events. We're also having our Youth Up Next activities coming up, and the CEO Youth Council is being formed and will be actively engaged very soon. And then finally, we have an update coming on our family and community engagement policy in a few months that you will see. The policy hasn't been updated in about eight to 10 years, so we're going to take a look at that policy, and you will see a policy forthcoming to update our family and community engagement policy. So with that, I'm going to stop. If there are other questions that you might have, the team is really here with me to help out. But yeah, thank you. And Vernon, was that slow enough for you? Sir?
Yes.
Good. Good, you're welcome. I'm a varsity debater by training, so I talk way too fast, so I literally felt I was talking so slow, but it probably felt like everybody else. It was like a nice, regular pace. So, thank you. You're welcome.
It seems that your presentation's more parent-centric and then includes the families and the communities. Because of the nature of Baltimore and the family structure, what do you define a parent?
So I say parents, but I say parents and families. I don't define a parent, actually, families do that themselves, but it's really about engaging all of our families, and if I've loosely used parent in place of family, the idea is whoever is showing up for that child at school, whether it's a foster parent, a grandparent, an aunt, and uncle, because I've been that aunt at my own niece and nephew's schools, it is the family being engaged with the children's education. We say parent because that's the natural go-to. So if we need to think about how we modify our public language, we can do that, but it is about families.
Yeah, because I'm looking at Call Action, like, Slide 4.
Yep.
And that's the hook page.
That's right.
And I...
We should say families instead of parents.
I don't know.
No, I think you're right. You say families instead of parents, so respect that families come in all different shapes and sizes, yeah.
Commissioner Bondima?
Yes, I want to say congratulations.
Thank you.
This was excellent, and because I had a lot of questions in the beginning, and you answered those questions as you moved along.
Good.
But the beauty of what you have presented shows that at some point, your team or you came to the table with background experience, and when you come to the table with background experience, you know exactly what's needed. And I think that you remember, I was one of the people saying how important communication is and public relation is, and we have to tell our story.
That's right.
And what you have done in this document, it brings you to tears almost, and I'm anxious to see the end results because you're telling our story, and we, and I say this all the time, I don't see the state of news reporters here listening to this story. I don't see anybody around in all the beautiful things. I don't know if the reporters came to the activity, to view the activity that happened at the Merlin Science Center.
Got a few.
I don't remember seeing big stories about it, and it makes me really, really upset about that, but so, forget them. We now, what you just said, we have to tell our own story.
That's right.
And once we have our ambassadors out there telling our story, and our families and our parents and our families, and people in the community see exactly what you're doing, our story will be told. We don't have to wait for anybody anymore. And what you have done, you've put together a document, and you have put together customer service, and you've included the community, and you included, and it wasn't hard to understand, even though she did talk fast. It wasn't difficult, it wasn't, it wasn't difficult to understand anything that you were saying, but again, I want to commend you and your team, and honestly, I look forward to seeing, talking, looking at this next year, to see how things goes and building the trust.
Yeah.
And I think that the board, I'm sure, will say that we put a lot of trust in your group, your team, and I'm just excited. I'm just, I'm sitting here, I had no questions after you started talking. I had a bunch of questions, but you talked about everything, and you had an answer and a conclusion, a deliverable, so I'm just happy about it.
Thank you. I do have an amazing team, I just want to say that. Yes, and thank you for saying that, but our motto is, "I appreciate you, I see you," and I say that to them all the time, but they also are beginning to say it to our families, right? And I see it even in our communications. There was a communication that went out after the potential ICE raids, and one of the comms staff wrote, "We see you and we appreciate you," to our families, and I got emotional, I'm getting emotional now even saying it, because it's a shift in culture about how we appreciate and see our families.
Great. I want to, again, to echo the thank yous. For someone that had no questions, you got, you know, to see how long that took, so that was wonderful.
That's okay.
No, I want a couple of things I just want to highlight. Thank you for being the team that took on the recommendations from the Enrollment Task Force, because as you know, that was really an area that we were really concerned to see that something would happen. And I just have one request. As you're including upcoming events, please include the board forums.
I got an email about that while I was sitting here.
We really want to be a part of the, of the family.
That's right.
I'm using the large term. So please, please, because we do need some help with the communications, as you heard already.
While I was sitting here, I got an email about the board forums, and we'll include it. I forgot to mention, we're actually creating a community engagement calendar. We wanted to have it done before the beginning of the year. It's not finished yet. It's almost done. I wanted every chief in the district to look at it and think of what's happening in their departments. We will include those. It's going to go up on our website, so anybody can look at it and see, where can I go engage besides a public board meeting with the district? And so it'll be, it'll be live soon.
Great. And just, I hope, I know what I heard and what you said. I hope everyone else who's either watching or here or will hear about it, but when you talk about ambassadors, that's all of us.
That's right.
So we are the ambassadors, you know, we are the system, this is us. So thank you again, and hats off to your team. Thanks for the work that you've begun, and we'll keep walking along with you and getting it done. Thank you.
And I'll only say one more thing, in only six months, right? Like, it's only six months, and all this.
It feels like six years.
Kudos to you. And I do want to give a kind of funny shout-out to Talia Richman, who is frequently the only press, Commissioner Bondima, who's at meetings, so I do need to shout out, given she shares my daughter's name. We just want to give her a shout-out, because she's at least here. Even when we don't agree with her, she's here. So we're glad about that.
You did good.
Thank you.
Thanks again. So we have the first, why do I have a... Yeah, I don't know, I put a mark beside it, I didn't know why. We have the first reader for Policy JKA, Behavioral Interventions, and Student Discipline?
My name is Lori Hines. I'm the Director of Student Conduct and Attendance.
Good evening. I'm James Torrance. I'm the Staff Specialist for Strategy and Compliance in the Office of Academics.
Good evening. Deborah Brooks, Executive Director of Special Education.
I'm sorry. Yes, please. Our offices, the Office of Student Conduct and Attendance, thank you, Commissioner Reed. The Office of Student Conduct and Attendance is actually proposing the proposed amendments to Board Policy JKA. We cross-functionally work with our academic offices to review the policies, because we understand that these policies do go across offices, especially in our Office of Special Education and Student Wholeness, as well as this work group is actually discussing what our current practices are, and we understand that the state law has changed, so we have to implement not only the state law, but what our practices are.
So with this revision, there was a law passed so that students in grades pre-K through second grade, those suspensions are prohibited, except in certain circumstances. So currently, a student can be suspended in grades, in that grade band, pre-K through two, for up to five days after a consultation with a licensed mental health care provider, and if it's determined that the student is an imminent threat of serious harm. I don't know if I should get into this, but we have also put some preventions into place so that, in order to prohibit the suspensions, we also have certain one-on-one aides that are designated just to that band for pre-K through two. So instead of removing the students, because we know that when students from this grade band, there are usually some underlying issues, you know, with the students, and that's why the behavior is now resulting in a possible suspension. So instead of removing them from school, we now have the aides who can come to the school, and so the students won't have to be removed from, from school.
And also by providing those additional adults to support the students, we are not over-identifying those students to receive special education-related services.
Okay. Can I just ask a quick question? And I know I'm not on the board, but it did just kind of pop. Are you, do you all, how are you taking a temperature check in terms of the schools and their kind of feeling that this support is sufficient, or at least to move in the right direction, and do you think you'll be able to make recommendations based on where the success points are in this, in terms of where we might need to provide additional support? And I'm only asking because I've had some focus groups with principals, so it would be great to hear from your perspective, you know, just what your, what some of the feedback trends are, really quickly. I don't mean to extend everything, but I have...
So when principals are calling in and they're requesting a suspension, I kind of gauge, because I'm the person who has to approve whether we're going to do a suspension or not, and so depending upon that circumstance. So when the aide is there, it's for the purpose of the student still being able to remain in school and not having to be removed, but it's not so much, suspensions and this grade bands are not so much like a consequence when we do, but it's to remove the student so that we can come up with a plan, so that when that return, when the student returns, we can decide, like, what are we going to, what are we going to do? And so we have to be, it really depends, it's on an individual basis of whether we assign an aide or whether we actually go ahead and issue the suspension. It really depends on the case and what has happened, and if there are other students that are still, you know, in danger, or if the student, you know, needs to actually be removed.
And Lori, will you all be able to report out on the trend data around the pre-K through second? That might be in this presentation, but even if it's not...
Oh, sorry. Oh, sorry. I should know better. Will you all be able to report the trend data? Because part of what kind of triggered the, the deep dive into this, at least from, I think, the board's perspective a while ago, was some of the data. Are you at a point now where you, you'd be able to say, "We're trending differently because of these supports?"
It's in the presentation. So we have a slide.
Or is it, I'm sorry. That's what happens when you're like not doing your homework the way you should.
No, that's okay. It's in the slide. So we will, we'll address that.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Also in state law, this past General Assembly session, they defined restorative approaches. We recently, before we have restorative practice methods. So what we did is we incorporated the actual, we basically had the same exact definition as the state. We just had to add two things. So we maintained our definition, but incorporated two other additional things because we worked hard on that definition as a district with advocates. And we wanted to respect the process that we went forward with those advocates and maintain that definition.
The state law also wanted us to go back and reconsider restraint and seclusion. And so in July, a technical assistance bulletin was issued by the state, which actually outlined the definition of what restraint was and what restraint was not, as well as what seclusion was and what seclusion was not. Also for us to define what positive behavior interventions and strategies were and what those, how to incorporate those into behavior intervention plans, not just for students with disabilities, those that have 504 plans or IEPs, but also general ed students so that they could also have behavior intervention plans through a student support plan, so that we were able to continue to support students without over identifying those students, as well as not suspending the students, but ensuring that we have behavioral support in place for all students.
Also, a revision was that we revised the definition. And so instead of using the term throughout the document, restorative practice methods, we changed that to restorative approaches. And we just wanted to align with the language that the state law had. We also didn't want the confusion of using restorative practices, the vendor, like the capital R P. And so we use several different restorative approaches, such as mindfulness and other, you know, vendors. And we are delivering restorative approaches. And so we replaced that within the policy.
As stated earlier, with our cross-functional team, we reviewed JKA RA and proposed the revisions to look at our exclusion, physical restraint and seclusion guidelines and looked at city schools. And we proposed that we prohibit seclusion for our students. Seclusion does, is not aligned with our city schools' practice of restorative approaches, as well as nationally, districts across the country are prohibiting seclusion within the school districts.
I already talked about this a little bit, but in this policy, it limited suspensions for students in grades pre-K through second grade. And so they do have to have a consultation with a licensed mental health clinician that is in the school. And as you know, there is an, a designated social worker, full-time social worker in every school. Because before, schools that had social workers on a part-time basis, like Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, and so if Johnny, you know, acted out on Tuesday and they wanted a suspension, we would have to try to find a social worker and get that social worker to that school. But now with a designated position of a social worker in every school, there is someone there that can give that consultation to the administrator if needed. Also, it removed the 59-minute time limit for student removals because previously, anything over, with our policy, anything over 59 minutes constituted a suspension. It would automatically turn into an in-school suspension. But we really want to do a thorough, make a thorough consultation or have a thorough consultation with the student. And we didn't want to limit that to 59 minutes if it took longer than that for the mental health clinician to meet with the, with the child. So we removed the 59-minute time limit. And lastly, we clarified the language for administrative transfers for safety and security concerns because we did not want administrators to circumvent the disciplinary response process, if that's what was needed, and try to just do like a safety transfer. We wanted to address the, you know, the, the problem that was happening at the school. So this is the data, Dr. Santelisus, that you are referencing. So if you look in school year 2016-17, there were 756 suspensions in that grade band. In school year 17-18, there were 143. And last school year, we only had 44 suspensions in that, that grade band. So you can see that the trend is definitely going down. So as you can see on the slide, the one-year change data was 81.08 percent and the two-year change was 69.23.
So, so I guess, Lori, one of my questions is, if I were, if I were approaching this from a, a different framework that has been the case in other districts, what, how do we know that this precipitous of a decline, which on, on first blush is actually the direction we want it to be going because we don't want little people being suspended at the rates that they were. But how are we guarding against, or how are we planning for and putting supports in place to make sure that this is a real decline and not just now we're shifting the response, right? So now that we don't suspend, but that we're actually addressing some of either the challenges that, that little people, and that's what I call preschoolers, right, our early childhood kids, that, that little people's needs are actually being addressed, not just that principals are afraid to report or call in, which has been some of the national discussion, number one, number two. And is there a, is, have, have there been efforts around actual developmental information that's been given to principals, either through training or something else? Because I'm, I'm just, because there's now a very national context in which these figures are occurring beyond just Baltimore City, which is, this is just about school-level people being afraid to report, not that we are actually changing the climate in pre-K to, the attitudes towards kids in pre-K to, or the provision of supports. So I'm just, I'm pushing because that is a very strong narrative nationally when people look at this kind of data. So how would you respond to that, Claire?
It's not public comment, Ms. Trueheart, but you, what you're looking for. I'll talk to you after. No, you go ahead.
Oh, okay.
You go ahead.
So you can go ahead, but I'll, but I'll also speak to.
So we will both speak to it.
That's fine.
So what we did actually was working very closely with Dr. Fink. And that's when we started putting in place the additional adults. So Dr. Fink and I said for this population, because what was bubbling up was that principals were saying, well, now that we can't suspend, what are we supposed to do? And so I said to Dr. Fink, well, then this is what we'll do. Let's put some, let's get at least four additional adults where we can see, where we know that there have been some schools that have had this challenge with this student population, to go to work with these schools, to collect data first, to see what is bubbling up for our young, our youngest learners, to have some PD around developmentally what to expect. Because for many of our students, this is the first time they've actually been in a structured environment. So Deborah, if this is the first time and I'm four or five in a structured environment, if I'm tantruming, that's typical. That's not that I have a behavior issue. That's not that. And so to be able to collect data, also by having a mental health clinician in each building to also be able to provide that professional learning for both our teachers, as well as for our, some wraparound supports for some of our parents, because there's some behaviors that we've allowed at home that students think, well, I've been able to do this at home, so why is it not appropriate to say, okay, playtime is now ended and it's now time to go sit in your seat? So some of this data, yes, principals were feeling like, okay, so what am I supposed to do now? Because they are in a classroom and there is time where you do have to sit in your seat and be attentive and ready for learning. So we have provided that professional learning. We have provided those additional adults to be able to collect data. Because there are also some instances where a student does need some additional support and may need some, they may be some developmental delays where they also need that. But to also work with schools to say, what we're saying is, please do not not call in, because we do still want to have a safe environment for all of our students. But we also don't want to over identify understanding what is developmentally appropriate for students as well. So.
Ditto to what Dr. Brooks said. But also, it is very important, I think it's paramount, that we do have the additional social workers in the building. Because previously, when we were, you know, asking like, has this child, you know, seen a social worker or seen a mental health clinician in your building, that social worker that was assigned to that building was only seeing students with disabilities or special needs. That was the caseload. And so now that we have those additional mental health services, they, this grade band is able to see the social worker. And so that is a, a great benefit to us this year.
Sorry. I thought, I thought I pushed it and I didn't push it hard enough. Because you're referring to the work of, of what would be the student support team. And I know that that's been, that's been an issue. So has some of this, has some of that professional development been around getting those teams reconstituted and really working well now that some of those other supports are, are available at the school?
It has. So in many cases, the social worker is actually, they sit on that student support team. And for, in some cases, they're actually the student support team chair. And so being able to provide that, we have quarterly training with our 504 and SST chairs collaboratively. And many times, they are the school social worker. So again, by having that 1.0 FTE social worker in the building is consistency.
Good. Thank you.
So again, some technical revisions. Previously, the name of the Office of Special Education was Office of Specialized Services. So we had to change that to put the actual name of the office. Also to clarify the language around cumulative versus consecutive, when we're talking about students with disabilities and then having manifestation meetings. Also suggested the referral for manifestation meeting for IEP teams, and this is for students that have IEPs, to look at this for five days rather than waiting for eight days, so that we can put the appropriate supports in place prior to getting to that eight day and then that 10 day. So what are the additional behavioral supports that a student may need so that they can be successful? Also, by having, by providing additional support around the de-escalation training for our staff as well.
And also, just to touch on what Deborah said, when they are calling into Student Conduct and Attendance Office to request a suspension, this is for all students, whether it's long-term or extended. If it is a student that has a 504 or a student with an IEP, we won't accept the suspension until they already have the manifestation date, you know, scheduled and planned. And again, before, as best practices, we want to do that within five days of the first day of removal.
So also some other technical revisions. When we talk about students with disabilities having language inclusive of students with 504s. So although students with 504s are students that are in the general ed setting, they are identified as students with disabilities. So it's inclusive of both students with 504 plans as well as students with IEPs. Also, again, to be very clear on the role of the principal and principals designate and to clarify the start of a suspension and expulsion.
I'm back. We've had rigorous robust engagement. So to give you an idea where we're at, we've met with PCAB, CCAC, the Associated Student Congress, the Charter Operator Advisory Council. But we're also right now waiting for comment back from the ACLU and also Disability Rights Maryland, because some of our, major, bulk of our revisions are for students with disabilities. We're providing them with the opportunity to give comment by November 1st. We're also meeting with them next Tuesday to discuss their comments so that we can walk through it. Also, we are, even though we met with the Associated Student Congress, we emphasized that we wanted to meet with students to discuss a regulation that affects them. So we'll be at their actual General Assembly where we'll hear from their actual student chap, their school chapters too, on the actual information. We also want to make sure that we're incorporating all this information into one solid reboot of our actual draft because we want to make sure that we heard and then we can record the commonalities that we heard across these multiple constituencies. Because often the things that we are hearing are the same. And this is about clarifying how people can read the document and clarifying what the people's rights are in the document. So that's what we're, we're actually saying we're hearing the public on this.
I guess a couple of things you said scared me. You talked, one, about seclusion. You guys getting rid of that. You talked about the 59-minute before removal. That scares me. Anything else that you have in the system for suspensions or restorative practices that seem draconian, that should be blown up just like these other two things?
Your question is, can you repeat your question? Is there, anything else that we need to remove?
Yes. Yeah. I mean, seclusion's not a good idea.
No, no, it's not.
59 minutes before you kick them out, it's not a good idea. Anything else that you're not telling us is not a good idea.
No, no.
Okay. All right.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes. And I'm, I think, one of the questions that I had, so, and I think it's because of our, it's on our end, around sort of the rationale behind why students are being suspended at this age. And so you get to see some numbers and some reports, right? And so I was wondering if there's a way for us to figure out, like, how much of, to disaggregate between the students who have immunization reasons for sort of being removed from, from out of the classroom or, I mean, removed or suspended for immunization reasons versus experiences with students who have sort of what they would talk about as disrespectful behavior or sort of those particular pieces?
So those numbers are separate. So when we do state reporting at the end of the year, so this is just, like, the numbers that you saw were strictly discipline numbers. So there are numbers. And it hasn't been broken down for that grade band, but it's across the, the district for students who are removed. So we don't call those suspensions. So we do call them exclusions for
Okay.
health-related reasons. That's what we call them. So those numbers that you saw did not include the health-related removals.
Right. And, and so maybe I also missed it. So when the, we have young folks who are at this very tender age, the types of developmental support, I believe I heard with working with teachers, to understand what's happening at that developmental level, is there a way for us to, I guess, better assess sort of patterns around teachers who are inconsistently sort of sending students out of the room for this particular practice so that we can have a better understanding of sort of corrective action that might be necessary or in more in-depth detail as well? Does that make sense?
Yes. It does. So again, any student who is going to be removed for any amount of time must call into our office before that suspension takes place. And so if we find that it is a student, like if it's a repeat offender for that grade band, again, we try to limit the exclusion as much as possible. But if we find that it is, then we provide the supports. So it wouldn't just be like an aide. But again, the purpose of them being removed is so that we can come up with a plan to best support that student and to provide the, the resources and supports that is needed for that particular, you know, individual child.
I think sort of what I was trying to get at, are, are there practices of particular teachers in rendering someone as delinquent that would sort of have them outside of the classroom more often versus them actually, the student actually in doing the thing? So I'm just trying to.
If this, this may help. So we hearken on the definition of imminent harm means physical threat to themselves and others. So to give you an example, a student knocking on the bookcase and then falling on other students would be an imminent threat. So it's, it's more of an action that can harm someone, not a tantrum. This is something that we have to think about.
And I think what Doc, I think what Dr. Brooks said earlier in terms of some of the work that you did in identifying where large numbers were coming from and then going into those schools
Yes.
to, to, to address some things, looking at the culture and the environment within those schools. I think that, Dr. Brooks, to Dr. would, would, yeah, that would start to address, to get at what you're saying. Because, you know, if a particular school has lots of incidents, then it may, it may be adult behavior and helping the adults to, to either understand their behavior or cha, and to change their behavior. And I, and I know that as you look at that data, that does, that does happen. That's a, that's a regular type of professional development that would occur. Any other questions, comments? Thank you. This was the first reader, so we'll, may see you with the feedback at the second. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
We will move to the financial summary. We will move to the financial summary.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Mary Ann Cox. I'm the interim chief financial officer. I'm here to report on the, uh, the closeout for FY19 for the general fund. For information purposes, more than anything else, and to give some indication of where those funds might go. So in terms of revenue, uh, the final budget was just under 1.2 billion dollars and our actual revenue was just under 1.2 billion dollars. Just for information purposes, the changes from the original budget to the final budget were all board-approved. They were supplemental appropriations for, um, uh, fund transfers, uh, from assigned fund balance. Uh, for this year, that was just a little over 10 million dollars. Uh, 2 million of it was for the Angela Davis Leadership Academy. 5.6 million was for the literacy curriculum and 2.5 million for the Title II initiatives. So you can see, um, on the schedule that, um, we had received 851 million dollars from the state. So you can see we get the lion's share of our funding from the state. Most of them are formula-driven, uh, based on enrollment and wealth, uh, relative wealth as we compare to the rest of the state. Uh, the city, uh, meets, uh, you know, met their, uh, maintenance of effort, which is a calculated number per, uh, Comar formula of 278 million. Federal, uh, federal revenue for us is, uh, the IRS subsidy and E-rate more than anything else. There's some ROTC money in there too, but mostly it's the IRS subsidy and, and E-rate. E-rate goes up and down because it's so dependent on the expenditures you had that year and how they qualify for the various E-rate reimbursements. Uh, this year, we were over in the federal revenue because of, um, uh, 1 and 1/2 million for IRS subsidy. We were in the middle of VCAP last year as we closed out 18. And the IRS had suggested we not bill for, uh, one of our payments because they thought it might be included in the VCAP resolution and they didn't want to give us the money and then have us ha, have to pay it back. So we got, uh, that's not how the VCAP settled. So we got three payments, uh, this year for, uh, the IRS subsidy. And our E-rate was a little higher than normal also. Uh, we, uh, received more investment earnings this year, more related to a slight increase in the, um, in the interest rates. Please remember that our investment policy aligns to the state. It's very, very low risk. So we have it, you know, we invest mostly in, uh, US government, um, uh, instruments. So even a small change for the amount of money we had to invest would result in an increase like, like we're seeing there. And also we had a million dollars for, um, unrealized gain that we have to record at the end of each year. So you can see that our revenue exceeded budget by, uh, 21 million dollars. So moving on to, uh, the expenditures, I just want to clarify that these expenditures are budgetary basis. What that means is those, um, it includes the, uh, relative increase or decrease of encumbrances in a given year. And these are the numbers that we report to MSDE, who in turn reports them to the Census Bureau. So these are, these are the numbers that we will be judged against the other LEAs in the country. So that's what, these are very important, even though the, the budgetary basis is a technical term from an accounting standpoint, but it's how they have chosen to, uh, accommodate the, um, the expenditures recorded in a given year from prior year encumbrances and the encumbrances at the end of the year. So you can.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Also that we have changed, um, our reporting. We've aligned our reporting in terms of our expenses to more closely align other districts in the state, correct?
Yes, there was that. One particular, uh, way that we interpreted the rules differently than every other LEA in the state. Not that it was wrong, it was a different interpretation. And it had to do with, uh, direct administration.
Right.
So there were things that we included in direct administration that no other LEA in the state did. And, uh, we, it came out in one of those Census Bureau, uh, reports where we had the dubious honor of the highest, uh, per pupil administrative rate in the nation. And actually, uh, when you look at it, part of the problem was four of, of the ones in the, I think, the top 10 or 15 were Maryland LEAs because of the way we must report. Uh, we have to report our expenditures according to the MSDE finance manual. And Maryland says that certain expenses go here, like they say, um, IT expenses go in administration and other states might record them in operations. So just as a state, we're at the top. But, uh, then we had, uh, the interpretation of where, like, uh, the equivalent of area superintendents or whatever's our ILIDs, where they should be reported. So we have aligned our reporting to the way the rest of the state does it and they are, are reported in mid-level, so.
And just as a reminder, even with that census, right? And the imperfection of that, I just, I'm reminding the board, you know, to reinforce what Mary Ann is saying about the, um, about the importance of the data. We went from being, uh, perceived as being the most top-heavy district in the state to now being tied as the district with the lowest amount spent on administrative costs. So if anybody wants to know why we believe in college and career-ready math, even though some of our, um, leaders across the state may not demonstrate proficiency in that, and even some members of the media don't demonstrate proficiency in that, this is why we want our young people to actually be proficient in mathematics so that they actually can do this level of analysis. Sorry, Mary, I just had to add that.
No, that's just fine. Just a word of caution, remember, everything is relative every year and, you know. Okay, okay. All right. So noted, so noted.
So Mary, Mary Ann, what's fringe?
Benefits. Anything related to benefits, you know?
Benefits?
Yes, all benefit-related. So when you, uh, see the, uh, general fund expenditures by object, which is the easiest to understand and to explain to people, um, you can see that there, well, our expenditures were under the, uh, budgeted amount. I can give you the three top reasons that, you know, actually there's four, but I'll give you the three and we can talk about the fourth. Uh, three of them was, um, if people, at the end of the year, as we close our books, we must accrue for all expenditures that we, that would relate to that period. One of the accruals that we do each year is a legal accrual. And if you remember, as we closed FY18, there was that transportation lawsuit related to that, that terrible accident. So we were part of that litigation and so we had to accrue an amount in FY18 for it. And then, of course, the case settled in FY, during FY19 and we were found not to be at fault. So, uh, when, like any other, um, accounting-type people, you, you accrue and then you reverse. So when we reversed it and we, we had to go in and do the accrual at the end of FY19, the FY19 accrual was far less, to the tune of, uh, $4 million less because of that, that transportation lawsuit that was settled. So that's part of why we underspent the budget because of this budgetary basis and the way you, you compare, uh, the carryovers from the prior year. Uh, also our non-public expenditures were under budget, um, somewhere in the area of 4.5 million dollars. And also just kind of to keep with what we were saying before, this budgetary basis adjustment that we make, which essentially compares last year's encumbrances to this year's encumbrances, some years it'll go up, some years it'll go down. This year it went down to about 6 and 1/2 million dollars. So that's part of why there's a 38 million dollar, um, uh, excess of budget over expenditures at the end of the year. And of course, you've, uh, as I was sitting there listening to the, um, presentations this evening, I heard multiple times references to vacancies. And that's part of this too. We had vacancies, so that's going to affect the salary and wages and fringe, but we are all making a concentrated effort to fill those positions in all these very critical areas. So, uh, we should not see that kind of variance, uh, in coming years. So, um, when you compare your revenue to your expenditures, the excess of revenue over expenditures, uh, can flow to fund balance. And then what do we do once it, once it goes there? There's a vehicle called assigned fund balance where, um, we have a, uh, board policy, DIG, that says what our process is to declare things, uh, for, uh, qualifying for assigned funds, fund balance. It's also an accounting treatment as well. There's certain criteria that must be met. But i, if we compare our revenue over expenses in FY19, on a budgetary basis, we had an excess of 59 million dollars. And then there are various, uh, tasks that must be funded. So we may do it in assigned fund balance. Just a word of caution, just because we put it in assigned fund balance, we're not allowed to use it. We have to come to the board and request approval to spend it, you know? So you will see all these numbers again. Uh, so you can see the air conditioning projects, which, you know, we're trying to solve that problem. And that's not to say we didn't do some this year, there's just more need. And, uh, uh, we're, we set money aside for a new ERP system. Uh, our ERP system is 20 years old and we need to do something. Uh, you know, our, uh, Oracle is not going to support our system any longer, so we need to proceed with that. And we have already started on, on that process. You know, and just, uh, other things, as you can see here, FFNE for Holliburton, Graceland. We, we need, you know, we need furniture and equipment for, for our, our new buildings that are going to end up. So, uh, some of these expenditures, uh, will actually be recorded once the board, uh, approves it in, in the capital projects fund. So we'll take it out of general fund fund balance and we'll transfer it to capital projects where it will be spent appropriately. So, uh, that's our, uh, closeout for the general fund. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, so, um, I, so that last slide, when we talked about the, um, the surplus and sort of having it sort of be automa, um, sort of allocated accordingly to our needs for the, particularly around the air conditioning? Um, is there a way to add more money to those or is there a set sort of, um, rate in which you allocate those?
That was the number that was suggested by the COO office for those things that would not be, that would not be, uh, the qualifications to be funded with state and local funding.
Okay. And for someone who is new, what does that mean exactly?
Gee, is there anybody from the COO?
So if a building doesn't have the right utilization rate, we can't use state funds for it. So it has to be at least, I believe, a 60% utilized.
60%.
Before us to use state. So those were, uh, projects we've already done, um, that, uh, or that we're, that are in process, but we needed our own, uh, resources to pay for them because we can't use the state funds for them.
Right. And so do, so, so basically are we saying that we have more, is there more money that we could allocate to that then, or no? No?
That was what, um.
That was what the need was. The rest of it could be funded by the state money.
That could only, okay.
Yes, so.
There is still a gap in, in, um, air conditioning that we have not paid for yet. So we have not paid for it all, so we are having to, because, um, um, we are, you know, the amount that we get in the CIP dollars every year is not enough to cover our needs. So we're kind of fitting these projects in to our CIP fund, um, as we can. But there are still, there is still a portion of funds, um, uh, that we haven't figured out where we're going to actually identify, um, where the funding source would be yet.
Okay.
As, as, as she said, we're, we're still trying to identify some of those places. So that may be one of them, hopefully. We'll see. Um, I want to, I believe, um, we are at the committee reports and. I was about to say. And, um, they are written and we encourage everyone, um, to please, uh, you can check them on Board Docs, um, and, uh, please read them at your leisure. And we, uh, always invite you to actually come and, and see them in person. So I think the last thing I need to do is actually read off the schedule, is that right? Okay, and so we have, um, Board Forum for Policy JKA, um, will be here, um, on October the 29th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM here in the boardroom. Um, I'm, uh, going to say to you, one of the things that the board is going to, uh, going to try to add as we do our forums is also to, uh, an opportunity, if someone would like to just discuss something other than what is the forum, um, um, subject or focus, if you'd just like to, to have a conversation with a board member, that will also be available on that evening. We'll have, we'll have one of our members will be, um, here in the room that could talk with you about other types of issues. The Teaching and Learning Committee meeting will be, um, in the boardroom on Tuesday, November the 5th at 3:30 PM. Um, our next, uh, board meeting is November the 12th at 5:00 PM here in the boardroom. Operations Committee meets on November the 19th, 10:30 AM in the boardroom. Um, Policy on November the 19th at 3:30. Both of these, again, are, um, are open to, as, as are all of our, uh, committee meetings open to the, to the, uh, public. There will be a board legislative, uh, forum here in the boardroom on November the 20th from 5:30 to 6:30. The Parent Advisory Board, uh, PCAB is meeting on November the 21st. A reminder again that this Thursday, October the 24th is a meeting around the recommendations for Curb and Funding at, um, Dorothy Height Elementary School at 6:00 PM. Is there any other business? If not, is there a motion that we can adjourn? Uh, Commissioner Reed and Commissioner Bondima seconds. All in favor? Everyone is raising their hand and so the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.